Okay, everybody, we're going to start the meeting up. This is the March 13th, 2025 Town of Fishkill Planning Board Meeting, and we're calling the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
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 All right. So as always, please silence your cell phones and speak clearly into the microphone. I'll get mine set up so that'll work okay. Is this sound okay? Can you hear me all right?
(inaudible)
Yeah, I don't think these are on. We're testing it. Hold on one second while we get them going.
(inaudible)
Yep, they're on.
Okay, yeah, that's better. Sorry about that. All right. So tonight we have six voting members here and one alternate member present. Our regular member, Robbie Ladell, and alternate member, E.J. Gopal, were not able to attend tonight, and so I'd like to appoint alternate member Kevin O'Connell. Kevin's over there tonight. That's a switch. I'll appoint Kevin to be a voting member for tonight's meeting. Thanks. Okay, we've got two public hearings tonight, so let's get going with those. The first one is Chick-fil-A at 18 West Edge Drive Site Development Plan. At 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible. Applicants seek Site Development Plan approval for the redevelopment of the former Boston Market located at 18 West Edge Drive. The project will include demolition of the existing Boston Market and the development of a portion of the project site to construct a new 5,400-plus-or-minus-square-foot Chick-fil-A restaurant with accessory drive-through, related landscaping around the perimeter, lighting, and infrastructure on the northern corner of the project site, fronting on Route 9 and West Merritt Boulevard. The project will include a total of 78 interior seats and 16 outdoor seats, and will be open from 6:30 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. The proposed drive-through has a total queue length of 444-plus-or-minus-square-feet, not square feet, sorry, 444-plus-or-minus-feet, and proposes a partial-length third lane. And that's good for now. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Felix moved it, and Fred seconded it. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. We have seven voting members right now. All right. If the applicant is present, would you please come forward and just give us a very quick sort of review summary of the proposal so that the audience and people at home will understand what this is about?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Charles Gottlieb from the law firm of Whitman, Osterman, and Hanna in Albany, New York, Land Use Council for Chick-fil-A. I'm here this evening with Chris Boyer from Bowler Engineering, as well as John Martinez from Chick-fil-A. Again, this is approximately 5,198-square-foot Chick-fil-A restaurant with a drive-through located at the corner of West Merritt Boulevard and Route 9, which is within the Town Center Mall site. It is replacing an old Boston Market that is out of business. Access to the project site will be from West Merritt Boulevard, and I will have Chris from Bowler Engineering run through the site plan for the planning board and members of the public. We submitted a revised site plan rendering, which you see on your screens now, on February 25th of this year. The site plan has changed based on comments we received both from this board, as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals, as we've now been to, I believe, two meetings with the ZBA and received comments on the requested area variances. Just to briefly summarize some of the changes that you see in this rendered site plan, based on ZBA comments, we have removed the third lane of the drive-through, which was a bypass lane. The drive-through can still stack approximately 44 cars. The benefit to removing that third drive-through lane is we were able to add approximately 1,200 square feet of green space back onto the project site. A sidewalk has been extended along West Merritt Boulevard. A curbed island has been located in the parking lot to facilitate pedestrian access points that you'll see going from the mall to the site, and also from Route 9 to the proposed Chick-fil-A building. We lost two parking spaces. The ZBA wanted to see some street trees, or parking lot trees, rather, and you see that in the island on the parking, or you see that island in the parking area. We also added loading striping along the mall site, which you can see, I believe that would be to the north kind of corner of the building. We've recently submitted back to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we have a meeting with them next week. Based on the changes that you see here in front of you, we are able to eliminate a variance and reduce a few variances pretty significantly. So we needed a front yard setback variance for the ordering canopy. We have two front yards here along Route 9, as well as West Merritt Boulevard, so we needed a front yard setback for that ordering canopy from both the center line of West Merritt Boulevard and also to the lot line of our project site. With the removal of the third drive-through lane, we've now reduced that variance by 13 feet. Related to impervious surfaces, as I said earlier, we added back 1,200 square feet of green space. So now, within our project site's limits of disturbance that you see up there, we actually have 5.7% less impervious surface than exists today, which we believe eliminates that area variance because we are improving the site conditions. There was also area variances related to the access point of the drive-through and its distance from the Route 9 front yard setback. That area variance has been reduced now by 23 feet, so another significant reduction. We did receive comments from Mr. Lynch from MJ Engineering. We will be submitting formal responses to all comments that we've received for a future meeting, certainly to the extent there's any questions this evening that we can answer, we will do so. Tonight, we hope to present to the public, obtain any comments that we will again be responding to in writing. If the board sees fit to close the public hearing, we would certainly encourage that. And then, I believe this board is doing a coordinated secret review. So the Zoning Board of Appeals cannot act on the area variances until this board issues what we believe would be a secret negative declaration. So we would encourage this board and your consultants to kind of commence that Part Two of the secret process and get that underway, as the ZBA appears to be reviewing things pretty quickly. So with that said, I'll hand it over to Chris to give you some more details, and the public more details, on the site plan itself.
All right, thank you.
Okay, good evening. For the record, my name's Chris Boyer, and Charlie did a great job, so I'm going to be very brief because I think he did a great job of talking about the site plan. I would like to point out a few overall things for the public, just so that they can understand this project a little better. This is the site where a former Boston Market currently sits vacant today, and what we are looking to do is invest and transform and redevelop the site with a Chick-fil-A. One of the best things about this project is that we're able to come in and make the site better. The first thing you'll notice is that the driveway, the entrance to the mall, as you can see it on the plan up in front of us tonight, is moved further back from the U.S. Route 9 intersection. It's a huge improvement because sometimes traffic stacks on West Merritt, and this project allows the new plaza drive to be moved further back, and as you can see in this aerial where the cars typically stack, getting that entrance further back from the intersection is extremely helpful. It's an expensive thing to do, to move an entrance drive, but it's part of this project to do that. The other important things that John had mentioned is that we are increasing green space. This is important because this is an underused section of the mall today. It's a large vacant parking lot that's out there. I think we laughed at one point that the only thing that it's used for sometimes is Christmas tree sales. And so to be able to activate it and add back green space is something that we're very excited about. As far as the flow of traffic, again, the main access is moved back. We share the access with the mall. There are no new access points being proposed to Route 9, and all interior lot circulation is accommodated on the Chick-fil-A parcel. There is a patio proposed for the warmer weather that's coming. It is a smaller patio. It's got four tables. It's to the top of the plan, so there is some outside seating, as well as inside seating. And the last thing I just wanted to show the public is what you're seeing right now is the current proposed plan that includes all of the changes that Charlie just mentioned. So I would like to show the public where we started with the board, so that they can see the improvements. And mainly, if you just look at the drive-through at the top of the plan, you're going to notice as I go back and forth between the two plans, the difference of impervious area, so you can see it got much bigger there. So that was three lanes of drive-through with the concrete that's there, and now if you look at where we're at with this one, you see how much green space was added, and it really helps everything, really, from the presentation of the site to the flow. So we're excited about this. If there's any more questions that the board would like me to discuss for the public, I'm here. If not, we can step aside and look for any comments that the board or public may have.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this point, I'd like to see if there are any members of the public here tonight who would like to speak at tonight's public hearing. Just raise your hand if you are here to speak for this public hearing tonight. I see one person. All right. Well, I'm going to quickly read through our rules of conduct for public hearings, just so we have it on the record, and we do have a second public hearing tonight, which this will also apply to. Speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves, so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone. Speakers are limited to no more than four minutes, and there will be a warning when there is one minute left. Speakers should provide only new or different information. Repetitive comments that might have been made previously or at prior meetings are discouraged. Speakers are encouraged to submit their comments in writing, so that they can, so that you can summarize the comments during the hearing. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the board, that is this particular application under review at the hearing. No verbal interruptions, shouting, or other outbursts. That goes without saying. So, all right. So there was one gentleman back there who would like to speak. Why don't you come up and give us your name and address, please?
My name is Gennaro Flori. I'm co-owner of Boutique Wine Spirits &amp; Ciders located at 18 West Edge Drive. I'd like to thank the esteemed members of the Town Planning Board of Fishkill for having me up here, and I know a lot of people are excited for the Chick-fil-A location to be opening in 18 West Edge Drive, but I have a couple of concerns. To start off with, on the project proposal body, it states that there will be 78 interior seats and 16 outdoor seats. However, on the actual site deal, I can't read it on this graphic, but on the website, it's saying 90 seats, so either way, that's either 90 interior seats, and the plans don't match what the actual written body is, or we're adding 16 and 78, which still don't equal 90. There's also on the plans on the website, specifically a crosswalk that's going to the back-loading doors of Boutique Wines &amp; Spirits, which is a dead-end section. I don't know why we would have members of the public going into the back section there. I don't see it on this drawing, but it was on the drawings that were on the website that I checked earlier today, and I have that with me if you'd like to see it. Speaking of that specific area, where we have these two lanes going past, that is the service section, if the board doesn't mind me going up to point. Right here is the back entrance to both the Gym Planet Restaurant and Boutique Wines &amp; Spirits, where we receive deliveries, both the restaurant and ourselves, at least five days a week, with holidays being more, and it doesn't look like there is enough space there for there to be trucks loading and cars passing by. That creates a safety risk for the employees going out to receive stuff, the drivers taking stuff off the trucks, drivers coming through there, pedestrians, and we're a little nervous about that being so close and so tight. Right now, there is no major issue the way the place is currently designed, but that is one that we see being an issue, especially around the holidays, where sometimes we will get 10 or 12 trucks in a day between the two businesses. Also, dealing with this space of these just two lanes coming through, there have been a number of articles that are posted about Chick-fil-A coming into locations and there being huge traffic concerns. I understand that they are moving the entrance further up, so that there is more space on Merritt, but two lanes coming in and out and no egress where people can leave or enter on Route 9's side seems like everything is going to be coming through that one direction, where we have deliveries loaded, where there's a crosswalk on some of the plans that doesn't make a lot of sense, and I see potential risk for pedestrians, people coming to our shop, people who are just trying to drive in traffic backing up onto Merritt and maybe 9.
You have about one minute left.
Okay. I brought those articles with me for the board, if they'd like to see them, but it's not one location. It's locations all over the country that have had issues with that. Again, I'm not against Chick-fil-A coming into our community and into our lot. I just feel like these plans, the way they are currently configured, have the potential to cause a real hardship on the local businesses that are in here, other businesses that are right off of Merritt, safety concerns for drivers and pedestrians, and just severe traffic in the area. With this knowledge, I feel like there's an old adage of if you fail to plan, you plan to fail, and if we know this going in, that this is where deliveries are happening, and this is where people are going to be all coming in, like, we should do a better job of making sure that there's a positive traffic flow, especially with other potential businesses coming to the lot. There's talk about a supermarket and a gym coming in there, and do these plans take that volume into account on top of this volume? Anyway, I probably reached about my time. I'd like to thank the board, Chick-fil-A.
Thank you very much. All right. Are there any other people in the audience tonight who would like to speak to this matter? I don't see any hands.
I don't see any.
All right. Well, the board is going to have to decide whether to close the public hearing tonight. We had one speaker raise some questions and issues. Also, there are these, what have been conceptual modifications to this point, that were submitted by the applicant, and also, we will have a project review a little bit later in the meeting, where our engineers, MJ Engineering, the traffic engineer, has raised some points in the memo that we'll go through, and so I'm just, I'll turn to our attorney, Dominic Cordisco, to just see whether the board should consider closing the public hearing, or whether we might want to keep it open for those couple of reasons I mentioned, one being the new plan submitted will have to be incorporated into the formal site plan submission, and when we get to the MJ's memo, we will talk a little bit more about the traffic issues that were raised.
Yes, I defer to the board on this one. I mean, the public has certainly been notified, and you have had the value of having public input now on the proposed project with comments that obviously I think the applicant will want to address, but I believe that the applicant's counsel would like to address the board regarding closing the public hearing, so I defer to.
Sure.
Please.
You know, just a few things. Certainly, we understand the gentleman that just spoke's concerns, and will address those. You know, this board has the ability to close a public hearing at a point where you don't think there's going to be any substantial or large-scale changes to the building layout or the project site layout. A few of the comments that you heard this evening were certainly one related to the location of the crosswalk leading to his loading area. I think that can easily be addressed, you know, through a reevaluation of where that crosswalk should go, and also some additional measurements into the delivery area. Related to traffic management, I've been fortunate enough to be going around the state of New York and doing permitting for Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A does produce traffic, internal traffic, but we've also learned that that internal traffic doesn't last forever. It's typically during the grand opening periods of the restaurant. During the grand opening periods of a Chick-fil-A restaurant, a specialized training team actually flies in to train staff on how to handle grand opening period. There will be Chick-fil-A team members in the parking lots who are trained to handle traffic circulation. There'll be coordination with the Town of Fishkill Police Department and others in town staff on how to handle that grand opening period. So I wanted to kind of address that concern, because I do know that is often something that boards and residents in various municipalities do get concerned about. So I would feel comfortable if this board would close the public hearing. Certainly, we will address the public comments to the planning board's satisfaction.
Let me also ask, Dennis Lynch is our engineer, and we will get to the MJ memo a little bit later during project review, but I just wanted to see what you thought about closing the public hearing tonight in terms of particularly the comments raised by your traffic engineer.
As far as the comments that we have with the traffic, I don't think that there's anything major that's going to be, that make any changes in the actual plan itself and the layout, and again, our comments that we had from the overall site plan review, I don't think there's anything major that's going to change anything, so I think that we, I think it would be comfortable with recommending that we close the public hearing.
All right, thanks. Any issues with planning board members on closing the public hearing? No. All right. All right. So, let's see if there's a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed Chick-fil-A Site Development Plan tonight.
So moved.
Felix moves it, and Felix seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. So, yes, we will ask the applicant team to respond later on, and we can actually talk more about that during the project review, the issues that were raised by the member of the public. So, given that, the public hearing is closed, and we can move on to the second public hearing tonight, and then we'll come back to you later on. All right. So the next public hearing is Fishkill Medical Park Site Development Plan, Special Use Permit and Subdivision. This is a site development plan approval and special use permit approval, Town Code Chapter 150, Section 15097B and 150109. This is for construction of a 30,776-square-foot, two-story medical office building and an 11,310-square-foot, single-story medical office building, together with associated utilities, parking, and landscaping improvements. And this also involves a subdivision approval, which would be under Town Code Chapter 132, Section 13212G, which would be the subdivision of two existing lots into three lots to allow separate financing of two of the lots for the proposed medical office buildings. Lot 1 would consist of 20.44 acres and would include the construction of that 30,776-square-foot office building. Lot 2 will consist of 11.79 acres and would include the construction of the 11,310-square-foot single-story medical office building, and there are currently no plans for development of Lot 3, which would consist of 15.67 acres. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony moves it, and Fred seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the public hearing is open. Welcome.
Welcome.
Mr. Povell, if you could just give us a brief summary of the development proposal, so that we can let the public watching know what's going on with it.
Sure. First of all, my name's Bill Povell. I'm the engineer for the applicant, Kirchhoff Acquisitions. I'm here with Jeff Kane, who's also with Kirchhoff Acquisitions, and the project's, or the applicant's attorney, Rebecca Vol. We're here tonight seeking approval for two medical buildings on a 47.8, or two parcels that equal 47.8 acres. The parcel is east of the Route 9 and Snook Road intersection, as well as the eastbound on-ramp from 84. The property's bordered for a long distance, along Snook Road to the south and 84 to the With this proposal, we're proposing to subdivide the two parcels into three parcels, and what that does is it creates the two parcels for the two buildings we're proposing, and this would be on the western side of the property. Much of the center of this large parcel is occupied by wetlands and a tributary stream, so this would be upland area to the west. It's also an area that was cleared in the mid-2000s for a previous project, so a lot of the growth is new and young. So in addition to the subdivision to create the two lots, we're also proposing a site plan application for the two medical buildings, which are permitted use in the R40 with a special use permit, so we're also requesting a special use permit as part of this application. Building 1, which is to the left on the screen or to the west, is a building that has 15,388 square feet, each on two stories, for a total of 30,776 square feet. The second building, which is to the right on the screen or to the east, that one is 11,310 square feet. And again, both of these buildings will be used for medical uses. With the plan and the two buildings, there are multiple entrances, and what we've done with this plan is propose the parking around the building to provide, you know, proper access to each of the entrances. With this plan, we also set the buildings far back from Snook Road to provide a significant setback or buffer to the Snook Road. So again, you know, the parking is around the building. We are proposing slightly less parking in order to save impervious areas. The entrance will be all the way to the west, or as you're coming off Snook Road, and it would be the closest location as you reach the property, just past the town water plant. With this plan, we're providing a boulevard-type entrance that will be landscaped. There's significant landscaping that we're proposing throughout the site. In fact, we're proposing more quality trees than exist now. In fact, we're proposing more quality trees than exist now because the site was cleared in the mid-2000s. A lot of the growth is young and a lot of it's poor-quality sumacs, so we feel that's a great improvement, you know, to the project. With the plan, we would be connecting to the town, both the town water and sewer systems. The water would be connected to the water line that runs through the site, and then sewer would be connected to the sewer that's in Route 9 to the west. I'm trying to think.
I think that's a pretty good overview.
Okay. Yeah, so that's really about it. So I'll let the public speak.
Okay, thanks. All right, so again, for this public hearing, I'll ask for a show of hands from anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this public hearing. Don't see anybody. There's one, okay. All right. Why don't you come up? I've already read the rules of conduct for the public hearings, but if you could just give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Tim Walsh-Jammin. I live at 222 Snook Road. I had one comment. I know that they had done a traffic study recently, but there is also another project being built further down the road that the traffic study does not take into consideration, the continental comments. I know that is a little further south, but people will be coming up and down Snook Road, particularly from Lime Kilm, that area, and I'm trying to think of the town's name, East Fishkill. And then there's also been a significant increase in traffic with the recent building of the Amazon facility. We do get a lot of people coming down Snook Road, especially when 84 is backed up and people are going Route 9 north and 52 then backs up. They'll come down Snook Road as well as a significant amount of tractor trailers that service the Amazon facility and also the Mopar facility that was just completed. So I don't know if that traffic study takes into consideration all of the recent development and the future traffic that we have been seeing in the area. Additionally, I know that they are doing a lot of landscaping, but that is a very particularly wet area, especially in the end of winter and springtime, like right around now, in a normal weather year. That area does flood and will flood into the little culvert that is built that feeds Race Run, the stream that runs through there. And that little culvert floods over and then you'll start seeing it flood onto the road. So I don't know if the plan has taken into consideration the significant water that snow melt and spring rains will bring. And additionally, I don't know, I know they said it's done a lot of landscaping, and yes, it is young trees, mostly sumac, but is there a proposal to kind of keep the aesthetics of the neighborhood that exists now? Not necessarily hide the whole development, but, you know, us who have to live across the street from it, is there some way to preserve our neighborhood view and kind of keep it feeling like a neighborhood and not an extension of Route 9? That's all.
Can I just ask, how far down is your house or how far away from the site?
From the proposed entrance, I am, actually, you can see my driveway on that medical thing. It's right above the M in medical.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can attest to your thing about the traffic and people coming off of 84 because I've been down there.
Yeah. I know recently, like, there was-
Coming up Cary Road and everything else, yes.
Yeah, I was coming home one day and there was a line of traffic all the way up and over the overpass of 84.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. So do we have, okay, we have another person who would like to speak. Come on up. And again, just please give us your name and address.
Sure. Ann Legoy. I live on Wellesley Place in Fishkill, the town. You know, I pass this site regularly, and I'm on Snook Road, and I've noticed over the last year, there's been a lot of fill. And so, and now I'm hearing, you know, about the wetlands and this gentleman is talking about flooding. I'm just curious, and there was a lot of fill. It wasn't like a couple of truckloads. There was a lot of fill, and I'm just wondering if that's part of this project, if that was something that was done before anybody even knew there was a project going on? Where does that lay in these plans? And was there any accommodation when putting the fill in there to the wetlands? And I'm just curious where, like, where the wetlands are in relation to all of that fill that has been dumped on the property? I shouldn't say dumped, but like, you know, you use a dump truck, so I guess you dump fill. So I'm just curious about where, how that lays into this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll have to have the applicants respond to those questions later on. All right, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak tonight? Seeing no one. Well, let me, let me ask this to our consultants over there. We have one key SEACER and site plan issue that's still pending before the board, and that's the archaeological issues that, so there was a Phase 1A archaeological survey that's been required by the State Historic Preservation Office, and the applicant indicates that they've retained an archaeologist and a Phase 1A report is being prepared. Is that correct?
It's being updated because there was a prior archaeological survey that was prepared.
Right, right.
A Phase 1, 1A, and a Phase 1B. There was multiple shovel tests that were part of that, which indicated no historic or prehistoric impacts.
Right. Well, we just recently have gotten the memo from SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office, requiring the preparation basically of a new Phase 1A study, which presumably would incorporate-
Right, and that's something we are addressing.
Yeah, so it's kind of a timing issue, but it is a SEACER issue and it's a site plan issue. So again, I'll turn to our attorney, Dominic Cordisco, to just ask, with that kind of issue pending, would it be appropriate to keep the public hearing open? And we certainly, I think, can't move too much farther with the SEACER review until that archaeological issue is wrapped up.
Yes, I concur that as far as SEACER is concerned, that the board would not be in a position to move forward with any kind of SEACER determination at this time, with that being a open item. However, the purpose of the public hearing is to get public comment, and you had the benefit of receiving that tonight. I don't see the two issues as necessarily being linked, but it's the board's discretion as to whether or not to close the public hearing or not.
Dennis, do you have any thoughts about that?
I would agree with that.
Okay. All right, what does the board think?
I won't be inclined to close the public hearing, but I have a question.
Go ahead.
If something were to come up in this report that would be something that we would consider significant or something to be addressed, could we then reopen or have a new public hearing?
That would be a question for our attorney.
Yeah, that's throwing it to her.
I think that if there was a substantial change to the, to the project, you know, that that would provide an opportunity for, you know, possibly a second public hearing, but it would have to be substantial that it would, you know, necessitate, you know, a review that would be different than what's pending before the board at this time. And so it's hard to contemplate exactly what that would look like.
I would just say I agree with your attorney. I would also note, I think the risk of it is pretty small, being that we've already had significant amount of testing, so I wouldn't want to keep the public hearing open for such a small risk. We understand that if something substantial came forward, that there's a risk we would have to re-advertise, but because the likelihood of that happening is so small, we understand that that's always a possibility, that the board would need to re-advertise if something substantial were to be found.
Could I just ask, what's the anticipated timeframe of the Phase 1A report going to SHPO and that whole process working its way out?
We all get to talk tonight. And Jeff Kane, for the record. So the draft is, as I spoke to the consultants afternoon, the draft is on the internal reviewer's desk. I expect to see a draft of it in the next, next couple of days, and it'll go to SHPO soon after. And they, they have a, I think, a mandatory 30-day turnaround, but they've been, they've been pretty good about turning around and turning around their comments within, well within the 30-day time period. So I think, you know, again, we're at the end of that, end of that road. And I guess the only thing I would add is, we have to respond to what it says regardless of the public hearing is open, right? We understand that. Public hearing is certainly an important tool, but it's, it's not what will drive whether or not, I think, the project responds to anything that that shows up. Thank you.
And actually, we do have Liz here, who's been working on this project review with the board for a number of months now. Let me just get your thoughts on closing the public hearing.
Well, you know, when I was doing this review and I'm looking at how few comments there are left in general on this project, a lot of things have been addressed, including site plan, you know, issues and code issues and SEACER issues, and it really is down to just this one. And I actually was kind of surprised because there was such a huge body of information about the site and a pretty hefty presentation of all the prior studies in the area, so, but still, you know, the project team has to do what they have to do, and SHPO, you know, they'll expedite their timeline if they can, but it really is the last piece in terms of, you know, being able to move forward with SEACER, so.
Any other thoughts from planning board members about closing the hearing?
I would support closing the hearing.
Ditto.
All right. Then would somebody like to make a motion to close this public hearing on the proposed Fishkill Medical Park Site Development Plan, Special Use Permit and Subdivision?
So moved.
And seconded.
Anthony moves it and Felix seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. Okay. So we will continue discussion about this project a little bit later under project reviews. Thank you very much. Okay, we actually have several requests for extensions of approval tonight. The first one being Dutchess Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Board to review the submission. Yeah, there's some similar sounding here, but Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on February 21, 2025, which is a request for a second six-month extension of the Resolution of Conditional Final Approval that was adopted by the board on September 14, 2023. The board granted the first six-month extension of the Resolution of Conditional Final Approval on August 8, 2025, which will expire March 14, 2025. Welcome. If you could just give us a brief explanation of why the extension is necessary.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nicholas Ward-Willis of Keenan Bean on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for hearing us tonight. So since the last condition was approved, we, at that time, had obtained approval from the Department of Health and Department of Transportation. We needed to satisfy some remaining conditions concerning posting bonds and inspection fees as well as the land bank parking agreement. The town board has set the amount of the bond. We've also taken steps to clean up the site. I know it was being maintained during the summer of last year, and then we fell off a little bit during the end of the summer and the fall. The fence had also been stolen that was around the site. So this week, our client's lender was out there and had some improvements done to the And the fencing was reinstalled at the site, as well as the landscaping was cleared. Something major had been by the side and seen that work, but that's being completed, and so the site now looks cleaned up. The second aspect is the performance bond. So I'm here tonight with Michael Houghton, who is the representative of our applicant, as well as the representative from the lender, Goldsmith Investment Group, Mr. Tony Vaccaro. And we are in the process of preparing to submit the bonds in the very near future, within the next 10 days, so that we can then satisfy that condition of the site plan approval. We understand your process is that we'll submit the land bank parking agreement for the planning board's attorney to review. We'll submit the form of security for the performance bond and the maintenance bond, and we'll submit checks for the inspection fee and the outstanding balance of the escrow. That will be reviewed, and once your consultants confirm that all the conditions have been satisfied, the planning board chair will then be authorized to sign it. So we're asking for the extension, and we're, think we're at the final steps, and we've taken the steps necessary for this board to grant us that extension.
Any questions from board members, questions or comments?
What did you say was going on with DOT?
We had to get approval from DOT for our curb cut.
Yeah.
They granted us the approval and have issued the permits. One of the conditions they said was, and this board may recall, there's also discussion about the roundabout.
Yes.
And so they granted us the permit, and they've recognized that our curb cut may change based upon the layout of the roundabout, but because they've not advanced the designs of the roundabout, they were giving us a construction permit so we can come in and out, get our supplies in, and they're also willing to leave our entrance where it is proposed and approved by this board. And if, when they get around to that project and design it, that may require some changes to our entrance, but they were comfortable they could accommodate that, given the length of frontage we have along the road.
Did they give you any indication of when they were going to look at that roundabout?
It started with a 2-0, but after that, they weren't willing to give a commitment.
By the way, I did see workers out there today.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Did you want to mention something or?
I had an extra set of pitches if you guys-
Oh, that's okay, thanks. Well, let me ask this. I know we've been working with you all on this project for quite a while now, and whether a three-month extension rather than six months might do it for you? I just, I hate-
I don't think that's unreasonable. I think you're right. You have worked with us for a while. You, as much as us, want to see this project proceed. We are prepared to do what we said we'd do with our bankers, so I think 90 days is sufficient and gives us time to submit it, your staff to review it, and then have you sign it. So thank you. No objection to 90 days.
Okay. What does the board think about that?
It's fine.
They can do it in 90 days.
Dominic, do you have any thoughts?
I think the board should grant the extension.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve a three-month extension of the Resolution of Conditional Final Approval for Dutchess Self-Storage? That would go till June 14, 2025.
So moved.
All right, Bob won out on that one, and Felix will second that?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, the second request for an extension is- Okay, the second request for an extension is now, we're at 415-453 US Route 9, uh, at the former Duchess Mall site. So this is for both subdivision and site development plan. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on February 26, 2025. I won't read through the, all of this, but it's, uh, requesting extensions for both approvals of the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Subdivision Approval. The applicant is, uh, requesting, um, two successive 90-day extensions. And also then the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval for Site Development Plan. The same would be true for that. Welcome, and please, um, just give us an update on everything and why you would need that extension.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Chris Fisher with the firm of Cuddy &amp; Federer, here on behalf of the applicants. Uh, we have been before your board on extensions previously, and at the last time we were presenting to you, our really sole remaining issue that was material was the Duchess County Department of Health sign-off and approvals. Uh, we're pleased to report that we have their approval. So we're actually now in the process of just getting their signature on the plat, which is the first step before coming back in and having the chairman, uh, sign that. We did, uh, certainly not necessary for you to go through it tonight, but we wanted to show you that we had made substantial progress, and we included all of the materials that are conditions of approval, um, basically to get Debbie and everybody ready at staff. But we're, we're close to saying, um...
That's this package.
Yeah, that's the package. You don't need to go through it, but, but, um, Debbie is going to require that and, uh, some, a $25,000 fee, which we're prepared to, uh, provide. So we're at a point where we're looking for, uh, staff review, um, and hopefully we'll get the county sign plat and get that over here. I think honestly, we're within 30 days of being ready to have you sign it as, uh, chair, subject to the staff review, but, um, we didn't want to be in a position where we're running up against a deadline, and so we were asking for the extension.
Any questions or comments from board members?
No. No.
I, I was making reference to the property not being maintenance, but I see that they made some progress on cleaning up the property.
Yes.
In the meantime. So that's good.
They are. And the other, not related to the extension, but the other good news, uh, we had mentioned a long time ago when you asked, uh, whether the applicant was going to proceed to build this, or maybe joint venture or contract. We are very close to, uh, don't have anything to announce, but very close to having that done too as well. So I, I have every confidence that the owner, uh, we're going to perfect these approvals and, uh, be in a position to get this into construction at some point in time in the near future.
I'll ask the same question of you that I did with the previous, um, applicant, is whether a single 90-day extension, um, would serve your purpose?
I, I think so. We're, we're currently slated to expire April 29, so I think that takes us out to the end of July.
Yeah.
I think four months, in my opinion, is more than enough to complete this. So yes. 90 days on the extension, but four months from where we're sitting today.
You have a month to go on your current.
Yeah. You got a little over a month.
Yeah. So Dominic, what do you think about that?
I think the board should grant the 90-day extension.
And Dennis, are you okay with that?
Yeah. Yes.
All right. Any other questions from board members?
No.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve a single 90-day extension of both the Resolution of Conditional Final Approval for the subdivision and the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval for the Site Development Plan for 415 to 453 US Route 9, Duchess Mall? Uh, that would take it to July 28, 2025?
So moved.
Bob moves it, and Kevin seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And the third request for an extension is for Healy Hyundai Lot Line Realignment and Second Amendment Site Development Plan. Board to review submissions made by the applicant's representative on February 26, 2025, um, which is for, um, extensions for the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval for the Lot Line Realignment. I won't read all of that. And then also the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval, Second Amendment Site Development Plan. So, welcome, Mr. Day. If you could give us a brief explanation.
Good evening. Uh, the, the applicant and the attorneys are basically finalizing all the, uh, legal documents, uh, the de-descriptions and easements necessary. I have been told that we should have this resolved within the month, or, I'm sorry, a month. So I think at this point, we would respectfully request a 90-day extension.
So a three-month, basically, extension as opposed to a six-month extension would suffice?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for board, from board members? What I did want to mention, um, and this has been going on, the project's been going on for some time, and the dealership has been operating on the site for a number of months now. But it has come to my attention that a substantial amount of landscaping on the front of the site has not been installed yet. And, um, I won't go into all the details, but the approved site development plans, um, do show a substantial number of plantings along the Route 52 frontage, at the front of the Healy showroom, along the eastern perimeter of the site, and in the parking area east of the showroom. And I did check recently, and those, those areas, um, still have not been landscaped according to the, um, the site plans, and also according to the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval for the Second Amendment Site Development Plan. There's Condition 14, which states that all landscaping and screening indicated on the approved site plan shall be installed prior to the issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy or Certificate of Completion. So I was going to suggest, um, that a three-month extension rather than six months would probably be appropriate, but we want to make sure that this, um, gets completed, um, not only in a timely, but in a complete fashion. So any, any questions or comments from anyone on, on a three-month extension?
Is there a reason why that hasn't been done yet?
Well, it's been winter. That's one. We, the intent is to do it in early spring. The time of year when we could do it last year was just not, was not feasible to plan. And with the amount of salt that gets plowed up onto 52, it wouldn't have survived. So we decided to wait till spring if...
Spring's, spring's right around the corner.
It's right here.
Yeah. So, yeah, a three-month extension would take you till July 12th, actually, with the additional time on the current extension. Okay. So would somebody like to, um, make a motion to approve a three-month extension of both the Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval for the Lot Line Realignment and Resolution of Preliminary and Conditional Final Approval, Second Amendment Site Development Plan for Healy Hyundai, which would take it to July 20, 12th, 2025?
Some moved.
Felix moves it.
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
Yes.
Oh, that, there was a, okay. So there's a one, no?
I know, and abstain.
All right. Let me calculate this all out. So we have five in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we are at project reviews now. So we're back to Chick-fil-A at 18 West Drive, Site Development Plan. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on February 26, 2025. So why don't you come on up and, um, just go through a little bit more detail about the conceptual modifications, um, to the plan that you submitted, and, um, I know a lot of that is, is, are things that we talked about at the last meeting and before. I'm really pleased to see the, um, addition of the sidewalk along West Merritt Boulevard. Looks to me like the, um, additional plantings in the parking lot are a good idea, but why don't you just go through them a little bit more detail and see where we are?
Yeah. Again, for the record, my name is Chris Boyer, um, with Bowler Engineering. And some of the changes that were made, um, are, we, uh, provided this sidewalk connection right here.
Excuse me, Chris, could you just move that microphone up just a tad? Thank you so much.
Yeah. We provided the sidewalk connection here. Previously on the plan, it was, it was here. And as we just heard at the public comment, and as I'm talking out loud, uh, sorry about the, the noise out there. There was some passionate talking, and, uh, we're in pretty good shape, but they're happy that we moved that sidewalk from here down to here. It directs people more towards the plaza instead of a trash enclosure indoor, a loading area that's there. Also, we were providing this hatched loading spot right there. So what that does is it allows, um, two, uh, trucks to park there. They're like straight-body trucks that would deliver liquor, uh, or wine or spirits. And there's also a restaurant in there, and they would have a Cisco truck or something like that. So the idea is that they could park their delivery trucks there, and it wouldn't impact the flow of traffic. So that was one of the changes that was made. The biggest change that was made is with the drive-through. So I know I kind of toggled back and forth before so that everybody could see it, but all of this green space right here was obtained by getting rid of the third drive-through lane that was there. That provided the green space, um, and also reduced the variance that we don't need anymore. Another change that was made is adding, we put in, uh, this right here is now concrete so that it provides, um, a seamless path for pedestrians to, um, make their way out to the sidewalk at the street. And then we added this island here with some trees. So some of the trees that we added to this, and it's a robust landscape plan that's there, include red maple, honey locust, eastern red bud, and flowering cherry. So we've got quite a few nice trees, and that doesn't even include all the smaller plantings that are, that are around at the same time. Those are the main ones that, uh, had been done, um, since the last, last meeting.
All right. Any questions from board members?
Just a quick one. So you're saying where the, where they can now park their trucks to load. Where were they parking their trucks before, do you know?
So they were always parking their trucks here.
Right.
The, the difference is, uh, it wasn't necessarily dedicated space, like a hatched unloading zone. There's room there for them to do it, and you have to remember also that the, uh, current drive into the plaza is right here, right? So there's a lot more pavement right here for them to circulate with trucks. And that's why we're creating that unloading zone there. So it's dedicated, uh, and will allow them to continue as they want.
But has anything changed that would make it so that they would have trouble circulating?
No. We ended up taking it out of our side. So this green area here is pretty thin, so we moved our curb back in order to help widen the space.
Was, I'm kind of curious, because I just seems, I, because I've seen things go on there. It just seems like, I don't know if that really is supposed to be a loading and an unloading zone. Because it's in a, it's in a, it's in a, it's in a progression of traffic. So I'm just...
I don't know the history. I mean, you're, you're going back. Those businesses have been there for, I just learned, over eight years. So, uh, they've been there for a bit. Uh, I don't know that it was ever designed to be that way, but it's how it's been functioning. And so our goal is just to be good neighbors and try to make it function for everybody.
Yeah, if you go to the existing site plan, there's actually, the, the way that it's laid out, there's a two-way, um, kind of, uh, ingress, egress to the plaza, and right where that existing, where you're proposing the loading in, in the two-way, is actually, it's a, it's a one-way now. Um, so I believe as part of this application, they're going to be widening that road, making it two-way, and then providing the, um, the loading on the one side, um, to serve the, uh, the back of that, those, those two, um, those two stores. I think the issue here is with that, the layout of the, um, the existing plaza is everything kind of interior, so you have exterior basically around the outside of the entire plaza. Um, so I think this is not the only location in this plaza that has that situation. If we want, we can possibly ask the applicant, if there's, is there more room that we could make that a little bit larger of a loading area, or?
We can look, we can look at that. I mean, that would be a minor change, and we might be able to squeak another foot out of it. I mean, any, I guess anything helps.
I think any other thing that, um, they want to consider, maybe possibly limiting the, uh, the time of deliveries or the size of deliveries, um, that the, that can be received at the, at that area?
Yeah, it's possible. Uh, we, we don't see it as a big concern because, um, this is not, um, like 18-wheeler tractors, really, and we confirmed that tonight, too, uh, with our neighbor, that this is all small box trucks. And that hatched area that we're proposing, uh, in the two-way, uh, traffic, uh, that's a huge improvement from what's out there, uh, today. So, um, I, I guess it would be possible to do hours or something of that nature with a sign or something, but, um, the way it's been designed, it could be any time of the day. I think there's enough room for a truck to, uh, to park there and have its hazards on, and it, it's much more formalized with our, with our plan.
When you guys get yours, your, your trucks could be inside your...
That's correct.
Your thing, and that, well, hours, I guess.
That's correct.
Okay.
Are there, are there any, uh, charts delineating the traffic patterns anticipated for the restaurant throughout that entire, uh, if, if you take this picture and take a more omniscient perspective?
Yeah.
The other entrance and through, past the old theater, uh, through the parking lot will be another way for people to beat the traffic coming in on Merritt Boulevard. There's going to be a significant increase in traffic through the internal road. There are pinch points associated with that traffic meeting this other traffic coming into the restaurant. I think you guys have done a yeoman's job in improving the layout that we see here. But my concern was, as I started driving through the area, thinking Danbury Chick-fil-A traffic, and the impacts on, uh, not only the existing other restaurants on the other end of the plaza, but traffic coming both in the new road coming in, as well as coming through the internal road, heading for the two lanes for the drive-through. There are significant pinch points, and those pinch points will be exacerbated, uh, by the loading trucks coming through that narrow, two-way traffic that, that you see there. So I see that two-way traffic, the walkway this way, where cars coming, uh, north will turn to go into the, through the parking lots, into the, into the, uh, uh, drive-throughs, as well as traffic coming the other way, going through the parking lots. They're going to meet there. There's got to be some kind of remediation there. Some sort of a, for lack of a better term, but some sort of a traffic remediation that says, okay, now it's your turn to go, and now it's your turn to, you know, given the fact that we got 44 cars, uh, in the queues and other cars wanting to get into the queues.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I mean, we want this thing to work.
Oh, yeah.
And we want this thing to work well, not just for the restaurant, but also for the community, so. So that's just my thought here. Because, you know, I really like this picture, but when I open the lens up and I see the other traffic coming in, that's when I get concerned.
I appreciate that. And you bring up some good stuff. So first, know that this is a very large site. And the first planning board meeting, I had expressed that this project turned into a bigger project as we went. We were just looking at the vacant parking lot. We ended up expanding and taking down the Boston Market at the same time. We've now got a site that's pushing two acres, bigger than any site that we've got going right now, by far. I don't think Danbury's got anywhere close to 44 cars, right? And we've got 44 cars in that queue, but that doesn't include, I worked on this one, 44 cars, that's just in this queue right here, but that doesn't include any of this area if we had like opening day, like crazy, crazy traffic that's there. I guess the point of the large site and the well-fought-out design that's there is that once they make it to our site, we've got the room on our site to control the traffic, you know, on our site, which is different than most locations that are there. One of the town engineers' comments actually dovetails into what you had just brought up, some traffic control and some thought to get put into that. And so, seems like a good idea. I think you and the engineer are on the same page, and I think we'll probably end up agreeing to, I don't know why it doesn't work on that, I think it must be just the light and how it's, at this area right here, they want some better signage.
And that's one of the areas that I was concerned about. The other thing I was concerned about is people, depending on the traffic, people will make runs through the existing parking lots.
Yeah.
So they'll skip the road. If the road gets backed up, they'll go through the parking lots. And the parking lots will have a beeline directly into the queues.
We would be happy to put some directional signage around if the planning board thought that was appropriate, right? We would be okay with that. That's something the planning board would have to want, but I think we could do that. You know, it wouldn't be illuminated signs or anything, but just, you know, Chick-fil-A this way kind of signs to direct people instead of cutting through the parking lot, to use the actual drive lanes. And one of the thoughts I have, so is, yes, we'll put in probably some traffic control for the engineer's comments and for your comments, so that would be some stop, stop bars to kind of really convey that. Two, we can expand this drive aisle even further wider to provide some breathing room, as you're saying, that's there. And three, the third thought that comes through my mind is that, could you imagine being on the planning board when this original plaza town center got built, right?
No.
Right? But think how exciting it was that you've got this brand-new mega-center that's coming in, and it's just gotten sleepy, you know? It got, putting this new energy into it is kind of revitalizing some of the thought that they had back then, as far as, you know, they've got these ring roads and things. So it's a good point that we can direct people towards those ring roads instead of cutting through parking lots.
Yeah.
It's something that we can do. But I think about that, you know, how exciting it was back then to have that power center there.
Well, I haven't done any queuing simulations in 25 years, so I'll leave it up to our consultants.
On that note, why don't we ask Dennis to go through MJ's memo?
We have our memo that dated March 10th.
Hold on one second, I've got a question. Very popular, everybody in Walmart is going to walk over the theater. How do they get into the place? Walking. I see a crosswalk going across West Merritt Boulevard, which I'm sure they're going to take. Then how do they get in?
Yeah. So up here is the crosswalk that you're talking about. They come down here, this is a cross, this is an existing sidewalk right here.
Yeah.
So they're coming down here. We've proposed a new sidewalk, crosswalk, sidewalk, crosswalk, right to our front door patio. So that was something that we added. That wasn't on the old plan. So the plan's gotten better over the time. So there's two ways, right? So we've added that path, and then we've connected a path over here so that it's pedestrian-friendly everywhere, from any direction.
Yeah, I just think walking right through your queue.
It might happen, but we want to provide them a safe spot to go.
Well, I can tell you that people from the hotels go across this way and that way across the road because of everything else, and, you know, they can't be the fixes of the whole world.
Well, I just...
I mean, that's what I'm just looking at. I mean, I understand what you're trying to say, it's just that somebody wants to go to Chick-fil-A and decides they want to park in Walmart and walk over that way, I guess that's your...
Well, I was just talking about the workers of Walmart.
Oh, the workers, yeah.
You know, they have quite a lot.
All right, Dennis, why don't you go ahead with your memo?
We did note in the report, in the traffic report, there was note that there was about 100 feet of the divider that was supposed to be removed, and there was going to be a turning lane coming from West Merritt into the site. The current plan only shows a double yellow line there, so we were just looking for some additional details on that, that turning lane on West Merritt, coming down to that new two-way street that we're, that Aplin is creating. We did note and are requesting some more traffic controls at that intersection that you were talking about, making it a full three-way stop. We also recommend that restricting the traffic to white only from the town center driveway to West Merritt. And then we also recommend that we would put additional signage at that intersection to make sure that, there is now, there is a sign that says, don't block intersection, but to have additional signage for that, the queuing that would block the traffic coming into town center hopefully would be alleviated by the left-hand turn lane and then that signage. We're also recommending signage, basically to force all the traffic to the south and to the south entrance, to try to alleviate some of that, or to the south or to the entrance that's next to Dunkin' Donuts. So it would be to alleviate some of that traffic that we're experiencing at the town center driveway and West Merritt. We also note that the traffic controls are noted, are maintained and operated by DOT, that we would look for some recommendations from them. And then we actually did note a sidewalk, or a crosswalk from, to the north on our plans to promote pedestrian circulation. That's kind of the highlights, if you want, we can go into more detail, or if you have additional comments for that, can we go through that?
You don't see a potential issue with people turning right into the parking lot over by the old theaters, and some people taking an immediate right to go to the two restaurants that are there, and other people going straight to the liquor store, or traffic going into the new Chick-fil-A. Because that entrance way, I think, will be as important for the Chick-fil-A business as the entrance way off of West Merritt.
Well, if you're coming from up Route 9 from the Wall area, you're going to want to cut there because, you know...
And then go through.
You're talking about the southern entrance?
The southern entrance. Yeah, to the medical center.
Well, like you said, there's been ebbs and flows in this town center. When I came here, it was an outlet center, it changed.
But we don't have to worry about the movies anymore, right? The movies like...
Well, no, but the thing is, there is future projects there, so it's going to have to be in the thought process of, there is going to be more traffic with, you know, possible gym or...
The hotel going up there.
Well, not the hotel, but also the fact that, you know, all that parking lot, like Dunkin' Donuts is here now, and the, you know, Chipotle and Five Guys, who's built in the parking lot, so you know, you got almost kind of, there is going to be quite a bit of traffic, but, you know, it's something we're going to have to figure out.
And I'll just mention, so far, we have not seen any evidence of plans being forwarded to the planning board on some of these new things that you're mentioning, like Planet Fitness is one we've heard about, and Aldi's is another one we've heard about, whether they both may be happening or just one or the other, we don't know because nobody's sent us anything. So that, to me, is a problem.
It's on social media, and it's, and they have been, they did pull permits to demo the spaces, so, you know, I guess something will eventually come in.
Yeah, and to that point, you know, we're controlling, it's in our control, and I appreciate the board's comments on, that you guys appreciate this design too. We've put a lot of effort, and then it's definitely going to be an expensive project. You can see the amount of landscaping that we've put in, the amount of green space, the quality of the landscaping. I just went through some of the types of, you know, trees and ornamental trees. And then widening, you know, we can take a look at that. And I think the next plan you see, you know, we can probably widen up and address everything that you guys have just brought up, and kind of make the gold standard of the corner of this shopping center, for sure. So we're excited about it, and, yeah, when you think about a movie theater, you guys jogged my memory on that, because I had forgot that, you know, they had exited there a while back. But, you know, that's way more traffic than a Chick-fil-A, just because when you think about it, they leave at one time. It's like a herd, right, mentality? So it isn't necessarily more traffic throughout the day, but it's the peak that's there. So again, we're starting on redeveloping, you know, adding life to a plaza that has capacity, right? Had capacity. It's going to be nice to make it shine again.
So any other questions or comments from board members at this point? I think all of the proposed conceptual additions are excellent additions, as well as what we've been talking about now. If you can tweak it a little bit and work in some additional widening of that area into the site plans, we look forward very much to seeing the more detailed site plan with all those things added into it. Which then leads me to the next question for the board, is whether the board should authorize MJ Engineering to prepare a draft environmental assessment form, parts two and three, and perhaps a draft, well, let's call it a draft neck deck for, at this point, for the board's consideration at the April 10th meeting. But that would certainly have to be conditioned on getting submission of a revised site plan set that would include all of these things. So whether that could happen at the April 10th meeting or not, I'm not sure. That's a fair amount of things to, you know, go through and be, take a closer look and be added to the site plan sets. But at any rate, we can ask MJ Engineering to have the secret documents ready for April 10th in case that we're able to move forward. What does the board think about that?
Good idea.
Yep.
Agreed.
Dennis?
Yes?
Does that sound like something that you would be able to do for the April 10th meeting?
Yes.
All right. So is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
That was spread, moving it?
Yes.
Anthony seconded it?
Yeah.
Any further discussion other than who's moving and seconding? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we will look forward to getting a new submission from Chick-fil-A incorporating all of these things we've been talking about, and we'll have secret documents ready should we be prepared to go through them. Okay?
Great. We appreciate the help and the continued review of the project. It just keeps getting better, and one day we'll have chicken sandwiches to bring in here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's a big input.
The next project review is Fishkill Medical Park Site Development Plan, Specialty Use Permit and Subdivision, for to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on February 25th, 2025. Welcome again, Mr. Kane.
Thank you.
We'll let you get things set there. But once you get set, if you can just go over your most recent plan submission and any revisions that were made to the site plan sets.
Okay.
Yeah, I tried that.
Well, we're into the technical difficulties. I think the, two things. One, I don't know if there were specific questions from the public hearing that you would want to hear from us about tonight. We can certainly answer a couple of those questions pretty easily.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay. I think the ones that I took note of, one is the question about the traffic, and did the traffic study take into account continental commons and future traffic? And the answer is, is yes. Continental commons was part of the baseline for the traffic report as prepared, and it was reviewed not by Dennis and his shop, but certainly by CPL. And they recognized that the traffic study was inclusive of that project and agreed with the findings. And then also, the future projects, there were not only some of the projects that were on the board, on the board's agenda and aren't built, including the redevelopment of the Dutch, a small site, but also there's a growth factor built into the traffic plan which takes into account, you know, future projects which nobody had heard of at the time of a project being thought of. So all that's kind of baked into the other traffic study. Just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. And I think the other issue that I wrote down at least was from a couple of the commentators, was about the wetlands, and then there was a question about, and our impact of wetlands, and the question about, you know, fill plane being placed on the site, and was there any impact of the wetlands? I'll note that the fill was placed as part of a grading permit issued by the town, and so that was really predated our involvement in the site there. And actually, the survey that we provided to the board, topographically includes a fill in place there. So our survey was actually done after that fill was placed. So the fill appears to be, you know, out of the wetland areas completely. So I think we're, again, it's, those are, you know, there's, we have a very minor wetland disturbance on our plans, but it doesn't look like that fill placed had any impact on the wetlands at all there. And I guess then the last piece was an impact of the project on the Snook Road. Look, it's working now, on the Snook Road.
That's because you had the subdivision up and it was only one page.
Ah, well, I would explain with the page down.
Don't want to say Jeff, but you know...
Page down didn't work, right, right. So, okay. But the, you know, the... it out of the, out of the drive lanes, and that's, again, shown on the plans there, in response to some of the comments that we'd had last time, so that's probably the only, I think, really, site plan change that, that was made here, but for the most part, we've been addressing some, some, some of the, some of the questions raised by, raised by your consultants.
Any questions from board members, before we go to Liz and ask her to go through CPL's memo?
No.
The third parcel, just kind of curious what, you know, what the thought process is for that.
Well, we're buying the two, the two Wesley piece, it's not, it's not part of the, not part of development, not part of, not part of our acquisition at all, so, it's, it's just a remainder piece.
All right, Liz, do you want to go ahead and give us kind of a fairly brief summary of your memo?
Yeah, I think, pretty brief, we're kind of down to, well, I know that there is, there are a few comments about sidewalk fund, and I know that there was some discussion about that, and I'm just wondering, are there any updates that your team has about, you know, consultation with the town, about the sidewalk fund?
I do not have an update, again, we're still, 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 still working to make good contact with the supervisor's office, and hopefully work, work that out, so.
Okay. And then, you know, as, as we all know, we're waiting for SHPO response, and, one comment, I don't know if you have a response at all to, on the planning board's part, is Duchess County Department of Planning and Development talked about a reduction in the number of parking spaces of 246, so on bottom of page four, so they're talking about reducing the parking spaces from 246 to 189, but the impression I have is that the applicants would like to have that number of parking spaces, so one of the suggestions that I made in that comment would be to maybe have about 20% of them, like 49 spaces, be pervious, and the main core of 197 spaces would be paved, so that's a recommendation in there. We need some details on the wiring of the electric vehicle stations, and, let's see, that's really it, I don't think there's any reason at this point to do anything procedurally until we have the SHPO response, so I had, you know, some procedural comments, but there's no point in going over those, because we really need the SHPO response first, so, that's it.
Liz, where do we stand with looking up to the sewer?
With the what?
The sewer.
We're still working through our, through our design details, to try to get, to get the plan that's gonna meet.
Do you have any idea how long?
How, how long, you know, I, I always want to think we're close, but, yeah, we're, yeah, just working through multiple parties, to try to get that, get that, get that to work, to work the best way possible, so.
But you're, I mean, the net is, you're connected.
The net, the net is, is that, is that, yes, yes, this, for this project, to really be successful, it needs to be connected to municipal sewer, right, the subject system isn't a viable alternative for us on the site, I think that's, that's the answer, you know, how we get there is certainly an important detail, but it's, but that's, it's, it's, it's a how, not, not, not if.
And that's a private, it's a private system, the force main, right?
Yes, we put private, private pump station, yes, connect it into a municipal system, yes.
And then, do you, I guess, on the plans, it looks as if the project is creating the force main on Snook Road, over to Route 9, is that correct?
Yes, and I think that's, yeah, I think that's, right, consistent with other projects in the area, yep.
Yep, okay, thanks for clarification on that. Is that?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, because again.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a very good point, because that's the technical aspects associated with how you create that system and connect, and, that's great that you guys are working that, but for us, we may have some opportunities to copy some of that in other areas.
Look, because that's what we do, right?
That's what planners do, right?
If it works there, why not here?
Yes, yes.
I have a question, Jonathan.
Go ahead.
So, I, I'm familiar with that road, and I know that when there's a lot of snow or rain, there's a significant amount of water rushing down that road, number one, so my question is, why, why are there so many parking spots, number one, and number two, the 15 acres that you're not using right now, is there a plan somewhere down the road to use it, because then that's going to be more area that can't really absorb the rain, and snow, and you know what I'm saying?
Right, right, so I'll take the last part of the question first, right, right, so, yeah, again, and I think that's, that's a similar question I asked earlier, we're not buying developing doing anything with that, with, with that piece, that's just our remainder piece, we're, we're only the, the two, the two Westerly lots are, are we involved in, so, and, and what the design is, and maybe I'll get, Bill'll get more technical than me, but the, the, the result of the, the engineering of the stormwater is to retain the peak flows, so that, in a storm event, the flow off the site does not exceed what currently happens, we don't, we don't make any problem worse, right, that's, that's the, that's the basis of the design, so then tying into that is, you know, why there's so many parking spaces, and so, parking spaces, yes, can have an impact on, on stormwater, because the more impervious surface you have, the larger storm basin, larger storm facilities you need, so they, they are tied together. Why are there this many parking spaces, is because this is the demand that medical spaces have, we don't want to build more parking spaces than, than we need to, we're not, we're not like the Galleria, where you, you build parking spaces so you can satisfy parking on, on six days a year, that's, that's not how it works, this is, in a medical setting, that parking gets used all the time, and, and that, that, it's, it's, yes, it's, it's peak, but it's, but it's, but it's, but it's peak, every day they're open, right, and so that's, that's why it is, it is, it is the number of parking spaces, the, the number of parking spaces that, that just kind of, planning, for instance, suggested simply wouldn't work for, for, for medical use, it just doesn't, doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't work that way, and so we, we did reduce the number from what the code required, but we think we're at the, we're kind of at the cutoff for what, 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 what we see in a multi-specialty medical building, will, will demand.
So, if you're not going to build on the 15 acres, why subdivide it? Why not keep it part of the other piece, and just say, it's a 30-acre lot, and you're not going to use it? Because you could sell that, right, down the road.
So this client doesn't own it, we're actually the contract vendee for the two parcels, yeah, that's fine.
I think in the very beginning of this process, the owner, the current owner of the parcel, was here, and did briefly talk to the board, but we did ask that question at that point, what are your plans for this third parcel that is a part of these two medical office buildings, and the owner said that they have no current plans to do anything, but of course, they would.
But that could change.
It, it could change, and if, and if they were going to do anything, they would have to come back to the planning board.
Could the non-developed portions of Lot 1 and 2 become conservation easement, to at least keep that part green, in perpetuity?
That's a good question, and that's largely the, the wetland areas.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like there's much left to build on, but I mean, at least.
The wooded areas, yeah, so.
So, and, and we've, I think, we've, we have certainly talked internally about the idea of conservation easements, and, and, again, we've got no plan to develop, and, yeah, it would be, it would be tough to develop in those areas, the, a conservation easement, the question always is, who holds that easement? I mean, we, we would, we could give it to the town, but the town isn't going to want to take it, I think that's been my, my, my experience, if the town wants it, we could give that easement to the, to the, to the, to the town, but that's, I, I, from, from a practical matter, we would note it on the plans, that can't be, can't be developed, and, and it could only then be developed, again, should we come back to this board, and the board say, you know, well, you said you weren't going to develop it, but, you know, again, something that wouldn't really happen, so we would be, again, our plan is to note on the plans, not to be developed, here's the, the fence line, nothing beyond here, happens, in perpetuity.
Yeah, a question for, for Dominic, is that something that maybe some kind of deed restrictions, covenants might be able to address, in terms of preserving the, the open space portions of the properties?
If there was a nexus to, you know, the board's requirements, as far as processing the application, it could be.
Yeah, it might be connected more to the special permit aspect of this, which, then, preserving the, the wetland and natural areas on the site would be the sort of trade-off for issuing a special permit for a use that isn't typical, per se, in a residential zone.
And often, that would be something that the applicant would be suggesting, or offering to place, rather than the board looking to impose, unless it's critical.
And, and we would, yeah, a note in the, in the deed is certainly, yeah, something that we would, would, and could propose, again, it's not a conservation easement, but it, but it has the same effect, I think, of preserving it, so that's, that works for us.
Well, that's the.
Have you looked at any other medical buildings in the area to see, like, how many parking spots they have, for like comparison purposes, because there are a lot of medical buildings around, I'm just wondering, it just seems like an awful lot of spots, to me.
Right, right, I, I, I've spent the last 30 years developing, developing medical buildings, and, and, yes, we've spent a lot of time on, on parking spaces, and it is, it is a unique driver in, in medical buildings, that, that we've seen, and that's, that's, that's just the experience of, of, of what happens, and it's, you know, and it depends on the specialty, again, some specialties have a lot more patients to turn over, some specialties, you know, I think, you know, pediatrics, you can have, you know, a bunch of kids in there all at once, and they, and they, you know, they kind of crank through, but people come early, people stay late, and so you've got that overlap, the doctor runs late, and you got, now, now you got more parking there, because stuff gets backed up, so, it's, that, that, that kind of demand, again, on the individual doctors can have a kind of a significant impact on, on parking, and that's why we've kind of worked around, based on the square footage, what, 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 what experience tells us the parking lot really, really needs, and again, I think, it's driven by, yeah, not, not just staff, but, but patients, and, and that overlap between patients on, on a site there, so, yeah, we, again, we've, we've, we've reduced it by, by, by what we think is a significant amount, from, from the code, hard, hard, hard to, hard to go fewer, and make it, and make it work.
Yeah, I, anyway, we were talking before about the sewer, because sewer water is like a hot cake sometimes around here, and I, do you have a secure water connection, really, though, yet?
Do we have a water connection, is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Bill, you want to talk about the water for a second?
Back when they installed the water plant, just to the west of this site, they developed two wells, as part of that, which is the Merritt Water District, they ran a 12-inch line through this property to connect into Merritt, and as part of that plan, they actually, on the approved plan, is a water service connection for this property, so that's in place, or was put in place as part of that design.
Somebody throw it ahead.
Dennis, why don't you just cover MJ's memo, if there's anything in there you want to highlight that we haven't talked about yet?
No, just going through, SEAKER, we make a note that the board classified the listed actions affiliated for, initiated court and ready to review, we know that there is a GML required for this, again, in our previous letter, we had made a comment about the new store, wetland regulations, just as a note on there, I think that you made all of them, just to double check, that all those new requirements for the DEC wetlands are in place, we make note that all the water and sewer improvements are subject to review by the Duchess County Board of Health, we did ask for some additional information on how the force, the new existing force main is going to be connecting to the 8-inch force main within the right-of-way, we also asked for some additional information on the, the pump station, that's proposed, there, as for stormwater, we went through, again, just to update everything for the new permit, there was, I believe you guys had done the, the deeps and perks for the site, but I don't think that actually made it into the SWIP.
Yes, we did do them, and they're in the appendix.
Okay, I think in the body, you just got to revise, I think it said that they weren't done, that there was an assumed rate, that you just need to go through and, and put in the actual, I think it's, it's fine, I think that your assumed rate was very close to what the actual rate was, but there was just some discrepancy between the, the writing and then what was, was actually done.
Okay, so that's just an editing error, but we did, we did design it per the actual infiltration tests, which were included in the appendix.
And then, we did just make note of possibly looking into doing, for infiltration, about putting some, possibly some dry wells in there, just for icing conditions in the, in the winter, but we can discuss that if we need to, but that's all we had for our technical person.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, real quick, because I, you know, the first guy that came up here about the traffic, and Snook Road, and the fact that people don't realize, too, that buses are going to start coming up in the springtime, to go up to truck reservations, people going up that way, the people that live up there, people that come over from the other side to come down, continental commons eventually doing what they're doing, there's a gas station, and now you have this medical office, and you have a little bottleneck opening where the lights are, on, to Route 9, is, is there any talk of like how they're gonna, do, do anything at that roadway right there, at that light?
I would defer to SEAKER, we didn't take.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I can, right.
Yeah, I'll talk to Dave Hastings about it, I wasn't, I have to be honest, I wasn't aware of.
Okay, so that's just an editing error, but we did, we did design it per the actual infiltration tests, which were included in the appendix.
And then we did just make note, um, of possibly looking into doing, uh, for infiltration about putting some, uh, possibly some dry wells in there just for, um, icing conditions in the, in the winter, but we can discuss that if we need to. But that's all we had for our technical person.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, real quick, cause I, you know, the first guy that came up here about the traffic and, uh, Snook Road and the fact that, uh, people don't realize too that buses are gonna start coming up in the springtime to go up to truck reservations. People going up that way, the people that live up there, people that come over from the other side to come down. Continental Commons eventually doing what they're doing, there's a gas station and now you have this medical office and you have a little bottleneck opening where the lights are on to Route Nine. Is, is there any talk of like how they're gonna, do, do anything at that roadway right there at that light?
I would defer to see if we didn't take, uh.
Yeah, yeah, yes. I can, right.
Yeah, um, I'll talk to Dave Hastings about it. I wasn't, I have to be honest, I wasn't aware of traffic kind of backing up and coming through the other direction to get back to Nine. That's a pattern I wasn't aware of, so I'm gonna mention that to him.
The traffic that backs up comes off of Route Nine and going up, it doesn't back up coming the other way from Carrie Road coming down, except that during the summer when the buses are there. All right, that's the only time it backs up that way, but a lot of people cut across and all the local people in Wickepie use that as the main way to get to Route Nine.
So it's a shortcut from Nine.
To Fifty Two.
To Fifty Two, okay.
You just go up over there, cross the bridge, go, and go down there.
Where, where's that Amazon center that was alluded to earlier?
He alluded, well, it's, if you go down, up, all the way across Carrie Road, go to, go down to West Hook Road, East Hook Road, make a left, pick up Fifty Two. And I have no idea why Amazon would do that, because if they're backed up, they're much better going up to the next exit. You know, Limekill Road or Hyde Park Road now. And that has a direct entrance in, but.
So I think if you, if you go, one of the questions was, was, um, improvements at Snook and Nine and, and interviewing the Continental Commons plans, their proposal, which, uh, was, I think, before, before this board, uh, is, includes adding a, I can't remember if it's a, if it's just a turn or, or a turn, through and turn, but adding a lane at the, uh, at the westbound Snook Road, cause right now it's just a single lane. It's got thrus, lefts and, uh, and rights. It adds a lane right at that, uh, right at that corner, so the rights can get, can peel off. I guess there's no through there, I should say.
Yeah, no, there's pretty.
Just rights and lefts, um, so the rights.
People make their own lanes, sometimes it goes a sidewalk.
Right, 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 so, but that'll, that'll, that'll kinda, um, that'll, because you can turn then turn around, right, that'll, that'll, uh, peel off a lot of that, uh, a lot of that, uh, that traffic there if somebody's turning left. So I think that's the, that's the big relief that was, uh, that, that, that was triggered by Continental Commons.
Okay, um.
Important issues.
Any other questions or comments? Because I think, uh, I think we're clear from, um, CPL's recommendation that we really need to hold off, um, have the Phase One A archaeological study submitted to SHPO, get a response from SHPO, one way or the other, either with them requesting more study or signing off on the project, basically, so, um.
I guess one question I had is whether there's a need to facilitate or poke at, you know, the whole issue with the sidewalk fund or just let it go as it's gonna go, so that's.
Well, yeah, I mean, we should, again, reiterate, um, and again, it's, it's, it's not clear to me whether the process will be, um, at some point doing the Seeker review and determination, then whether we go to preliminary approval and try to, um, you know, work out conditions that would be part of the preliminary approval, or whether we go directly to a conditional final approval with conditions. That donation to a sidewalk fund is one of the probably several or many conditions that we're gonna have to address. But I'll just reiterate to the applicant to do whatever you can to try to set something up with the supervisor's office, cause before you know it, um, time will fly and, um, it would be good to get something happening on that. So, um, I think that's about all we can do for tonight and, um, we'll wait to hear from you all on, um, hopefully the process of SHPO responding.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Great, all right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next project review is Century Aggregates, One Oh Seven Route Nine, Site Development Plan. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Welcome back, Mr. Day.
Good evening again. This project is a three hundred and ten acre site. The project that is in front of the board this evening is for a very limited portion of that site. Um, it's approximately, um, it's approximately an acre of area. It was formerly the Snow Valley Campsite. Currently, there's a pavilion on this site that, uh, is in the location of the proposed concrete batch plant, which is, uh, the main proposal. There is an existing bridge which crosses the Clove Creek, which created an entrance out onto Route Nine, which I'm sure we all know and it was, it's a fairly dangerous intersection. It's been, uh, it's been slated for years to be closed. Uh, the applicant is actually, uh, applied to the DOT, obtained an approval for a new entrance on the south end of the site, uh, which is across from Carolane. That was done prior to this application being made. Uh, it was approved by the DOT with site line analyses, uh, and there was some substantial regrading done on Route Nine in order to create the site distance requirements. In doing so, the, uh, the applicant reconstructed the, um, the monument, uh, created parking there and, uh, it was part of that approval for the DOT. The, the proposal for the concrete batch plant will utilize the existing entrance that was constructed in the south and one in the north will be closed. You've probably seen it, right now there's a, uh, they've placed fill there. They've, um, basically shut that off. Uh, once the, the access road is constructed through the mine, which is currently going on now, uh, that will be the main entrance for this site. In the event this, this batch plant is approved, that will be the main entrance for the concrete vehicles. Uh, this material for the concrete batch plants, the majority of them come from the existing mine. Some, the concrete, cement rather, will be brought to the site, neumatically installed in the three silos we show on the north end. Uh, we are not proposing to pave any of the existing roads, they are gravel roads. Uh, we're not proposing to do any, any increased impervious other than the buildings we're proposing, which is approximately the size of the existing pavilion. Uh, there is an existing ruins there, which is on the north side. Uh, that was an old, uh, building that served for many purposes. We are going to leave that where it is and intact. Uh, the bridge that's there now is, will be utilized as the main bridge. It's currently in, uh, fair structural condition, good structural condition. It is able to maintain the, uh, loading for what's coming across the site. Um, and basically that is, that's it. The plant is about, uh, eleven hundred feet from Route Nine and it sits down, I think forty-five feet lower than Route Nine. Um, I, I, I'm not sure any of you have even seen Snow Valley from Route Nine. It is a difficult site unless you're really looking for it. Uh, it's pretty heavily wooded between where we proposed to put the batch plant and Route Nine. Um, and, uh, there's no, it, there's no, there's no reason or intent to cut any trees on this site other than what we need to do to create the batch plant. The entire project is out of the floodplain other than the, uh, existing roadways. A question came up about what we would do in the event of flooding. It's pretty simple, if the site's flooded, it's probably raining and no one's pouring concrete. So we're not gonna be running in and out of there in a flood condition, so, uh, that's one of the issues. One of the things that came up, I believe in Liz's letter, is about the need for variance. We read One Fifty Dash Thirty Eight, which basically says the silo is excluded and it can be fifteen feet higher than the building, which in this case, the proposed batch plant is forty-five feet. The silos are sixty-five feet.
I thought it was tied to a specific use, a silo tied to a specific use and that's.
Yeah, that's, that was my understanding too, that it's.
Right.
It was specifically for farm silos, I believe.
I believe it is. I don't think it says that.
Well, let's, I mean, I know one thing that we haven't done yet is had any offline consultation.
Okay.
Whether you want that or not, that's, that's a choice.
No, I think we need to, to kinda get to some of these.
Yeah, it would, yeah, because I think a lot of this stuff could be addressed, um.
We welcome that.
Um, so I, I found something different and I thought I cited it in here. So that's, that's an important thing to get clear up about the silo.
That's what we've been referring to.
You said One Fifty Dash Thirty Eight. All right, I'll take a look at it.
But I don't think it specifically talks about any kinda agricultural use. I think it speaks to just silos in general.
Right.
Uh, we should also take a look at the definition of silo if there is such a thing in the code.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
We've received Mr. Lynch's comments, no exception, we, we will respond accordingly.
And you might wanna double check back with, um, the building department on that if you haven't.
On the what?
On the, the height of the silos.
I mean, I'm, I'm referencing the code, so, um, unless there's something that, unless there's a contradiction in the code, that, that's fairly clear to me.
I'm.
I'll take another look at it.
I'm on the same wavelength as Liz, because I think I had looked at that originally, early in the process myself and, um, actually found the opposite of what you're saying, so.
That clearly speaks.
Okay, there's a piece of paper sitting in front of Liz. We, we need to, we need to resolve it and figure it out.
Well, it's just one of these comments that's, it's, it's all the way through your memo, that's why I'm bringing it up. I'd like to get to the bottom of whether.
Well, yeah, because, I mean, the, the reason I mentioned it is to, you know, flag it as an issue that if, if there is a need for variance, you wanna know that sooner rather than later.
Absolutely with you.
That's why, so, so I'll take a look at that and I suppose, should I reach out to Joel? Or should the applicant reach out to Joel?
I think the applicant should reach out to Joel, but just.
That's, that's helpful.
But, yeah, meanwhile, I think the board can authorize, um, offline consultation between the applicant and probably, you know, both of our consultants.
Mr. Chairman, will I be included in that as well?
As we always do, if the applicant chooses to involve an attorney, then yes, you would be involved in that too.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to our team. No, but we think it's a good idea to sit down and just kinda look through the, the letter.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so, well, why don't we start with Liz? Why don't you go through CPL's memo?
Okay.
A fairly long memo, but see if you can.
It is, I'm gonna try to summarize and, and a couple places in there, I talk about Route Nine being, uh, a corridor overlay. You already spoke about a hundred year floodplain. I did mention on page three that the closure of the existing northern driveway and use of the southern shared access is, was a good move environmentally and traffic-wise. Shared access to the, um, concrete plant should, it needs to be a little bit more clearly delineated completely, so. And some of that just has to do with, there's kinda sometimes white space on the plans. Where the situation, and if we can have a little more information about the surrounding. But I, I tried to be really specific about, um, what we need. And then another example is there's a stream that comes down along there and I know you had a wetland delineator do part of it. I'm not, you know, the co- comment isn't to have more delineation done, but just to show the continuation of the stream.
You mean Clove Creek?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's see. And then one of the questions I had, I keep looking at the map and the zoning map and your parcels and it's really hard to figure out exactly where this is. And that's why, what I was hoping for, if you could somehow delineate, here's the R, is it R forty?
Yeah, R forty.
If you can somehow show that on a larger scale than the little teeny map in the corner, I think that would be helpful, just to clarify that.
We did that when we got the last comments, where that, our site, this site for the batch plant is clearly in the PI. I think the boundary of the PI, if I look at it closely, it may be Clove Creek. Looks like it on the zoning map.
If you could, if you could.
We can show it.
Yeah, if you can, you know, show it, like that little teeny map, I think is hard to do, but maybe you could do it a slightly bigger inset or something like that, just to clarify that point.
Easy enough.
And then you had, um, an explanation about the two truck pull-offs no longer being proposed and I kind of, in my comment on page four, sixteen A, was suggesting that, um, it seems like that might be a decent, you know, managing traffic for, you know, you, the ability of trucks to come and go more quickly to keep that area.
All right, let me explain why we took it off. First of all, we're trying to minimize impacts, which I think is a goal, close to the Clove Creek, which we think is good. All the trucks are, uh, they have radios and they announce where they are, both in the mine and coming. The other thing that happens in a batch plant, the only times trucks are gonna come from the mine to this site, uh, other than the concrete trucks, they're gonna fill the material bins. That gets done in the afternoon when the concrete trucks are pretty much done. The concrete trucks do announce where they are as they leave this site and get onto the, the mine road and they'll, they'll be announcing all the way through the site. All vehicles on this site have radios and keep in contact. So that's one of the reasons why we did it and was also to mitigate impacts.
Got it.
To, to clarify about the road and why it wasn't shown, at the time the survey was done by Beatty and Watson, that road was not completely, uh, designed yet or not designed, constructed.
Well, I mean, a proposed outline of it is fine.
Yep, we can do that.
That would be, and just, just say what it is when you put it.
Pretty far along, we should be able to locate it.
Right. You could, you could either show it as proposed or, or, you know.
The one thing we need to understand is that's gonna be a mine road and it will move as the mine develops. So it's not something that's gonna be paved or locked in, it will move. So, um, the clarification, we'll show it where it's going to be, probably for a period of time, but over time as the mine, the life of the mine goes on, it may move.
It would be helpful to have some notation about that.
Well, we can do that.
That would be great.
I understand it, that's a good idea.
That's, anything you can do to kind of say right, you know, nobody's gonna pull out the EAF or all these letters in the years ahead, they're only gonna have that in a drawer somewhere or as a PDF. And so anything you can explain about how things are done, why they're done or whatever is helpful, so that's notation about the mine moving. And then, uh, I did have a couple questions, these are kinda technical, about, um, whether or not, um, any of the concrete, any of the water being used, uh, for the concrete batching plant. Um, is there something to prevent release of any wastewater onto the project site? And then the corollary question is, um, if there's any accidental release of any wastewater onto the project site, how would that be handled? So it would be helpful to have maybe some notation about, is there a process?
Do you wanna?
I'm, I'm just highlighting some comments.
It was a question that was on my mind as well, cause I was thinking, we meet some sort of a, a, a berm or something around it.
It's, it's even better than that, it's better technical. The, the batch plant building has what they call a washout in it, which is basically a low area. The trucks will come in, they'll wash out. What they are is settling basins, the, the, the gravel, the sands, they'll settle out. The water goes into a bin, is recycled, reused in the next batch and the rest of it is just any of the gravel that comes out of it is actually picked up and reused in the plant. Everything's recycled. The water used is, is inside, it's in a tank, it's in the building. It's an eight thousand gallon tank. It's used specifically for con- to load the concrete trucks before they go out and when they. to load the concrete trucks before they go out, and when they batch. That's all from a well, which will pump, you know, eight thousand gallons will be in storage that morning, when they get ready to go, and they'll use that water as they go. Most of the water leaves the site. Everything that's mixed in...
In a concrete truck.
In a batch, right.
Right, right, gotcha.
So, any of the chemicals that are used in it, like any kind of ad mixtures, they are all MSDS. We, we are going to submit those next time. There's nothing that I would consider wastewater. It's all basically inert.
Yeah, and, you know, kind of what you, if there's any way to put just very, some brief notation, that's always helpful.
Okay, we'll do that.
Let's see. I, I'm hoping we can talk about pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. I know that DOT was requested, I guess by the town board, to reduce the rate of speed, and I guess that was basically denied.
That was denied.
Yeah. And, you know, so, I'm raising these comments only because I don't know what the letter said that went to DOT, whether or not they mentioned that it's a bike route or anything like that, and, so, so that's kind of an ongoing concern.
I believe the town wrote the letter, though.
No, I, I know it did, but I don't, I don't have access to, you know, what did the letter say. And the other thing is, on, I'm looking at the letter, and it, I couldn't tell who, who wrote the response. It was, you know, usually when you write a letter, you put your name under it, and then you sign it. So I couldn't really tell who wrote the response. Not that it really matters, but, so that kind of remains a concern, because...
Yeah, I mean, my concern is moot, but a lot of this stuff happened without the Planning Board's involvement at all, and so, the new entrance was a thing that DOT approved. The letter that went from the town was something that a different branch of the town sent to DOT, and then DOT gave their decision not to lower the speed limit. That's all stuff that we have no control over.
Okay. All right, well, that's...
That's as far as I'll comment on that.
Right, yeah. That's, well, that's helpful information to have. Let's see, get to something more substantial that we don't need to deal with here at the meeting. On the timber rattlesnake thing, there were other measures, and I'm wondering if that could be somehow communicated on the plan.
What page are you on now, of your memo?
I'm at page six, right up at the top.
Yeah, I believe there were some notes that the environmental consultant, we can add those to our timber rattlesnake.
Yeah, I saw there were like, you know, you had the main one with the fence.
Yep.
But if there's something else that could be added from the other measures in the report. I'll touch on the silo, because I need to look up that.
I have a quick thing about the water thing.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I know a lot of the batch trucks have hoses on them and stuff like that, and sometimes they wash on the trucks. Will they be doing it on-site?
Well, you mean when they go to a site?
Well, sometimes, you know, the guy comes in, and his truck is, came from a previous thing, and it's got some crud or whatever all over the trucks, and I see them, then wash them down, so, is that a possibility that's going to be going on?
Well, I think, I think in most sites, when you pour concrete, you know, there's a washout area that's, you know, it's part of an erosion control plan.
Okay.
So, I think the washout that we're talking about is what's remaining in the truck, so you can clean the, the paddles and, you know, everything inside it. It just gets it cleaned so that it's not...
Because I see a lot of trucks when they're on job sites.
They'll dump.
They wash out at the job site.
And they'll do the same thing, but it's not as thorough as it would be done in the shop, to keep the paddles clean, and so, basically, they wash that out to keep the interiors clean.
Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, let's see. So, regarding Seeker, I don't think there's any, we're not ready to take action at this point. Get some more information on the plans, and in the EAF would be helpful. And then, the rest of this is site development plan and code comments, and these are all pretty, pretty technical, I think. I don't want to mention the silos again, because I need to look into that a little bit. So, I don't think, I, I don't think there's a reason to touch on anything else here. Wait a minute, here is one more thing. So, regarding the noise study, last time, the board talked about possibly having another noise receptor site in the neighborhood, you know, maybe going further up the hill, and so...
That has been done. There's been a new report generated after we submitted, so we, we'll submit next time, but it was done. They did add the receptor, the one you mentioned in your letter.
Oh, you're saying they already added?
They did it.
They did it a couple days ago.
Okay. Okay, so you need to go over that? All right. That's it? And that was, wait a minute, was two thirty-three, Carolene?
Yeah, I believe, yes. Yeah, I just saw they come in, I didn't read it.
All right. That's it, and all the other comments were from last time. The only new comment is the one about that new receptor for the noise.
Thanks, Liz.
That's it.
Can I just, you want to go over MJ's memo?
Sure. I'm going over a memo dated March tenth. Seeker would just make note that it's an unlisted action, unless the, involved or interested agencies. GML, we make note that there is a GML required for the proximity to Route Nine and to...
I think we already, I think we already received a letter basically saying, with no comments, if I recall.
Okay, we got, going through, we know that it is on the Anopra for Protection Overlay Zone, so we just ask the applicant to provide a narrative discussing how the development complies to the, the regulations for the overlay, existing conditions plan. We just, we're requesting them, a note of who prepared and the date prepared for the, the survey. The details for the new access road, it looks like that's under construction now, and that was part of the original, the access road between...
Yes.
Okay, so that was, that will go away, that comment. If you could provide the, was there any details for that as part of the DOT?
It's just, it's really just a gravel road. That's really, it's, it's an existing roadway, and again, we weren't proposing to improve it. It's pretty, it's a, it's a pretty substantial roadway. It's been used for quite a bit.
Again, just like Liz said, I think if we can just show that on the plans and make note that, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe like a, sort of a detail that represents what it is or something.
The basin, I'm not, this is more detail of, I'm assuming that's just sheet flow that's going to go inside.
Yeah, we're assuming sheet flow. Again, we're thinking infiltration. It's not a very big area of, of new impervious, so, we're obviously just waiting, you know, now is probably a good time to go out and do the deep test pits. We also got to do them for the septic system, so, we thought we'd do them at the same time.
The building, entrances, the building, I think on the elevations, it was showing it on the western side. There's some overhead doors and a man door that's on that side. I know on the vehicle movement plan, you were showing the truck coming in, basically where the silos were, which, that can make that movement. I think, you just want to double check this, to make sure that if there are vehicles parked in those fourteen parking spots, there's enough room to make those maneuvers on that western side.
The only thing that goes back there is that off-highway truck, which is actually pretty small. So, and I think we did the vehicular movement for the off-highway truck.
I think you did. I think it just, it's going to the wrong spot.
It's going, what do you mean?
It's going, i-if you look at it, it goes actually to where the silos are, and the entrances are on...
That's the batch, that's the concrete truck.
Okay, I can double check.
Yeah, there's two, there's two movements. I did a concrete truck, and I did the off-highway truck, which will load the material bins.
I think just between where the parking spots are, and that, that the western side of the building, just make sure there's enough room, which should be, just to clarify that.
We can do that.
Also, in that area, you're showing that's where the septic's going. Obviously, that needs to be approved by DOT, by the Board of Health. That's going to be rated for trucks and everything for that. So, obviously, we're just looking for some more details on, on the septic system itself.
Okay.
The line of site profiles, I'm assuming that that was as part of the other, or the previous approval from the DOT?
That was part of the DOT.
So, that those can go away. I think that's all we have right now for this point for technical comments.
Okay. Any questions from board members on any of what's been discussed so far?
I just have one question. This is all private property, but if I wanted to go down and take a look at the site personally, how would I, would I enter?
Yeah, you might want to... Yeah, you want to be careful there.
Yeah, sign in and follow actual regulations.
Okay.
I'm thinking maybe we can do that through Debbie's office, if we need to. I don't want to have, like, a bunch of us going necessarily at the same time, but if one or two of us want to do that, maybe...
Yeah, I was going to go down there this morning, but, but then I thought of, perhaps it might be better just to ask.
You probably don't want to go. There's just a lot of, there's a lot of movement.
We just got a contact number, and then you can contact him directly.
Yeah.
Instead of...
Okay.
And then, one, one additional comment, kind of dovetailing it to Liz, is if you could extend the wetland delineation, just to make sure, it looks like you're, double check the wetlands to make sure that you're meeting the requirements for the, the new DEC requirements, especially when you're getting down to the south of the site.
Okay.
Good point.
Thanks. Have you found Jimmy Hoffa? We haven't started digging yet.
Well, first, why don't we get a motion to authorize the applicant to communicate directly with the Planning Board's consultants, including CPL, MJ, and our attorney, if necessary. That's if the applicant's attorney is going to be involved in any of that. Would someone like to move that?
Some move.
I heard Bob moving that. Is there a second?
Second.
Kevin seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to nothing. So, I think we have a recommendation from Liz that no action under Seeker is recommended at this time. I'm just wondering, maybe Dominic, if you can weigh in, whether we might want to at least classify the action at this point, and even, I mean, we're not really doing anything seeker-wise if we circulate a notice of intent, really, sort of than...
No, I think it would be appropriate at this juncture to do so.
Liz is sort of, are you?
I'm assuming it's unlisted.
Yeah, yeah, we, I think we've gotten input on that from, at least from MJ, and so I think we could probably move ahead with a motion to classify the proposed Century Aggregates Concrete Batch Plant Site Development Plan as an unlisted action pursuant to the Seeker regs, and to circulate a notice of intent to involve the interested agencies for the Planning Board to serve as lead agency to conduct a coordinated environmental review. Would someone like to move that?
Some move.
Second.
Felix moves it.
Fred.
Fred, Fred seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so, we will work...
I have a question.
We will work on getting the notice of intent out, right?
If they're changing the plans, what am I circulating?
Well...
The current plans?
For the, for the lead agency notice, I think basically, we can limit the circulation to the minimal necessary, which would probably be the environmental assessment form.
Okay.
I don't know, I guess timing might be an issue, too.
That's up to you, that's why I'm asking.
If you can get the notes added to the basic site plan relatively soon...
If we're going to do it that way, I'm sorry to interrupt this. I'm going to have to tell Mark how many copies I need, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
So that we can get it out of here.
Okay.
It's up to you.
So, I'll let the two of you work together on that and figure that out.
So, when you say notes that go on a plan, it's basically notes that we talked about earlier?
Yes, exactly, yep. So if that can be done fairly soon, we could include the, you know, the basic site plan with it.
Just so I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I think that's probably about what we can do for the night.
John, the question on the last project came up about conservation easement. This has even more open green space. Is that something that could be considered as part of this project?
No, we're not, we're not intending to do that right now.
Is future development anticipated?
There's none projected now. I don't, I don't, I don't know what else you could do on this site. I couldn't speak to it. It's, it gets pretty steep north of this.
No, I would agree with you. I...
It's pretty tough. I mean, it was a ski slope, so...
Agreed. I'm just asking.
Yeah, and I, there's no, there's no further development right now planned on this. Not to say it'll never be. I don't want to close a door, but certainly nothing that is envisioned at this point.
Understood.
Oh, that's something we can think about for later.
Just putting the question out there. It doesn't have to be answered tonight. We can talk about it at a future meeting, just...
Yeah.
There's even more green space here than the last project, so...
Yeah, that's a good point to think about. Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to Fiskill Commerce Center, Site Development Plan, Floodplain Development Permit, and Freshwater Wetlands Water Course Water Body Permit, Board to Review the Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on February twenty-six, 2025. Welcome.
Good evening. Good to see you all. Jennifer Gray from Keenan Bean, on behalf of the applicant. I'm also joined tonight by Representative from McCarland Johnson, Steve Bouver, and also Representatives from Skanel, Daniel Madrigal, and Jack Kelly. So, we were last before you last month, when we went through the preliminary draft EAF Part Two, point by point, and we also submitted a written response to the, the comments that we gave at the last meeting. Our submission also included a revised plan set and some additional materials that you had requested at previous meetings. So, if it's okay with you, I'll kind of go through some of the high points of what was included in our submission.
Okay.
So, we did...
Yeah, highlight it.
Yeah, I know it's getting late, so I'll, I'll be very brief. We did submit the visual renderings that you had requested with the bird's eye view of the site from various angles, and updated the labeling of the, the streetscape views from Route Nine. Another feature in the plans that we submitted for this month is, we indicated on the northern portion of the site, an area to be dedicated to the town for a trail easement, so that, you know, we had discussed at prior meetings, several prior meetings, a desire to have a future connection to the Hudson Highlands Preserve. So, at that northern end of the site, there is an area reserved now for the town in the future to, to make that connection. I wanted to also mention, while it is noted as an easement offer on the plans, we are open, we haven't done our due diligence to, to determine whether this is feasible, but I did want to mention that as long as it doesn't render us non-conforming with respect to zoning or, or other issues, we would be open to offering that in fee to the town as well, if that was something that the town was interested in acquiring, actual fee title ownership to that area. So, something to think about and explore in a future submission. I also wanted to note, with respect to parking, the applicant and the engineering team did a little bit of further plan refinement and updated the parking area. We did increase the number of proposed parking spaces. We had two seventeen on the plans previously. We're up to two sixty now. That's an increase in forty-three... We're up to 260 now, that's an increase in 43 spaces. And that would coincide with the number of employees projected for the warehouse. The number of employees for industry standard is generally one employee per 1,500 square feet of warehouse space, so that gets us to 260. Most of those spaces were located in the, I'll call it the, what is that plan? The south side of the building. There's also receptivity on behalf of the applicant to land bank some of those spaces, if that's something that the board is interested in. Continuing on that theme, that the loading docks were also changed. There's three less loading docks shown on the plans now. And let's see, two other things I want to highlight. One, with respect to sidewalks. We did some, you know, we looked at that further because obviously I know there's been a lot of discussion at prior meetings about the potential for trying to connect this site to the, to the front property via sidewalks. There's a couple of limitations there. One, as I'm sure you recognize, we don't own the property over which the sidewalk would be located. So that's the first hurdle. The second hurdle is the space that would be necessary for the sidewalk in that roadway that we have an access easement over. And lastly, the applicant had some conversations with folks at other warehouses that they've developed over the years. Skanel is, you know, one of the leading developers of warehouses in the nation. And the feedback that they received was that the drivers really don't want to be on site for very long. They're trying to get on-site and off-site as quickly as possible because it affects their, their driving hours. They're only allowed to have a certain number of driving hours before they have to stop completely for, I think it's 10 hours. So they're really motivated to get on and off the site as quick as possible. So that, that tends to detract from their, you know, their desire to walk off-site elsewhere, away from their truck.
Can I ask one question on that?
Sure.
That leads me to think about, what about the, I think it's 260 employees who would be working in the warehouse and their possible need for walking. They're probably more likely to seek, you know, restaurants or stores or whatever is in that area than the truck drivers might.
It is possible, but again, it's, we are limited by the fact that we don't own the property over which the sidewalk would be constructed. So that is something that we're continuing to explore, which leads me into the next point. I did want to talk about the septic and the sewer. So at this time, the septic does remain our only option. However, we are continuing to explore the sewer connection. We, we would love to be able to connect it to the sewer. I know the, the property owner in front of us, over which we would need permission to connect conveniently was, was on the agenda tonight. So I did take the opportunity to discuss this matter with their attorney, and we agreed to have further discussions in the future to try to continue this, this dialogue. So hopefully we'll have more to report to you next month on that. But for now, at this moment in time, the septic does remain our only viable option. I know in Liz's memo, in the CPL memo, there was reference to the medical center, the Snook Road Medical Center site that was on your agenda earlier today, and reference was made. Well, you know, they're connecting to sewer, so, so the presumption was, why can't we? And the main distinguishing difference there is they have frontage on Snook Road. So they can bring a pipe right down Snook Road. We have to get permission from an adjoining property owner in order to get a pipe out.
Have you discussed it with Mays, the May property?
With Mays?
The May property, which is where the community college is, did you back up to that property?
We do. So the pump station that everyone connects into is located on Hudson property.
But he is also, he owns that property himself?
The Duchess Community College property.
Yes.
Yes.
You talked to him about connecting through there?
I will, I will check with my client. My client has been having the conversations with ownership of the properties. So I, we'll confirm that if we haven't, that's another avenue to explore.
And then I'm going to ask you about the sidewalk.
Yeah.
If you're going from your property down to Route Nine on the right-hand side, that's owned by New York State.
Right.
Did you ask them if you could put a sidewalk in?
There are some wetland limitations there. So there is some, some resistance with respect to putting a sidewalk in the wetlands, but something that we can explore. Thank you, Mr. Cantor.
Thanks, Fred.
I keep looking at property shows.
So those were the main highlights that I wanted to bring up with respect to, to the submission that we made for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
But happy to answer any questions.
Any questions right now, or should we get to our consultant?
No, we can go to the latter.
All right. Liz, would you like to start with CPL's long memo?
Yeah, well, I mean, there are, you know, there are some repeats because you'll see, I just tried to highlight, you know, in the EAF comments, some things were answered and, but there's still a number of things that relate to the hydrogeologist review. So I left those in there as, as placeholders. And that's because it would be helpful to have that feedback on what are the potential threats to the aquifer or not.
Okay, let me just interrupt for a second.
Yes, please.
And I'll just confirm that the town board did approve Paul Rubin, hydrogeologist, at its meeting on March 5th. So he will be serving as the planning board's hydrogeologist consultant to assist in the review of this. So Mr. Rubin will begin his work on the project review once the contract has been signed by the town supervisor. So we're working on that.
Great.
And so the timing is to be determined, so we can update you on when that can all actually officially start.
That's great, yeah, we look forward to receiving his comments as soon as they're ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, and that, you know, that's kind of central, that's why. I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time on fully AF comments.
Yeah.
If they were remotely related to that. I did, you know, I was really happy to see the easement for possible pedestrian usage, so look forward to hearing more details about that and figuring out how that would be implemented.
Yeah, at some point on that, we probably will want to start a conversation with at least the supervisor to begin with. And, you know, whether it be easement or, and/or the, you know, the transaction donation. We'll have to see what, you know, what the town, the powers that be think about all that. But it sounds like a great idea to me.
Yeah, so I was very, very pleased to see that. I have a couple of EAF questions, but I know that you just kind of did. I know that you did some responses about that and, and again, also kind of putting that aside until I can look at everything all at once, once we have hydrogeology kind of squared away. So I did dive into the plans and gave you some more detailed plan comments. I touched a little bit on lighting. It looks like you kind of made some progress in terms of bringing that down. So now it's a matter of putting together some details on lighting, and I'm on my page eight.
Liz, can I ask a question? So we did provide spec sheets attached to our response, the McFarland Johnson response letter.
Usually.
You want the details in the plans?
Yeah, yeah, most of the time we have, you know, some kind of a basic lighting detail on there. It could refer to the spec sheets or whatever, but, you know, typically like an illustration of what the thing looks like.
Yeah.
And if you need samples of, you know, how other.
No, I think we're fine, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And by we, I mean McFarland Johnson will take care of it.
I didn't expect for like the entirety of all the information on the spec sheets to be on the plans.
Right.
Just kind of a detail.
Exactly, I understand. Just wanted to clarify.
Because that seems to be, you know, falling into, falling into line. I know your signs are going to be deferred. And then, you know, an ongoing question that I have, and I wanted to bring this up during the meeting. I know that everything right now says warehouse only, which, I don't know. I have mixed reactions to that because the whole idea of having potentially one or two tenant spaces with some flexibility and different kinds of use, I think has some benefits for the community in terms of, you know, the types of jobs that might be available and what kind of ratables are you looking at? So actually, I'm going back to, this is page, bottom of page one. So the assertion that the proposal is for warehouse use only, and all along, it seemed like there was an indication of anything from light industrial to warehouse. And again, I'm highlighting the flexibility of use in terms of filling either a single large tenant or more than one flexible spaces. And if you look at the floor plan, I can kind of understand the concept of the flexible floor space there because it's kind of done in chunks and rows. So I appreciate that. So I was, I felt a little disappointed that it was just going to be straight warehouse and that there was a decision to turn away from the flexibility and potential light industrial. So I don't know if the board has any feelings about that one way or another, but that was a concern that I had.
Doesn't that also dovetail with the comments under traffic way at the end of CPL's memo, which suggests actually going back and including.
Right.
The industrial portion and the traffic impact analysis.
And the idea is to kind of look at the full spectrum of potential traffic. And I think when I spoke with Dave Hastings, our traffic engineer, you know, he was kind of saying, look, there are instances where maybe something does meet the warrants, but there's still hesitancy to do a traffic signal or what type of traffic signal there may or may not be. So those are considerations, really kind of broad considerations for the community.
Wasn't, wasn't there also a discussion and a dependency on the determination whether light industrial was going to be included on the potential right lane addition?
Yeah, right lane out.
Right lane, so, and that was, I'm sorry, I missed last month's meeting.
No, that's, you're right.
Where we left in January, there was some discussion about that. In fact, John, I think you brought that specifically up.
Yeah, I'm going to do it again today, but not yet. I want to interrupt, Liz.
Okay.
Do you mind, can I speak to this issue?
Yeah.
Warehouse versus industrial, yeah. So the reason for moving to a warehouse-only change, warehouse-only development really was born from the discussion that occurred in January, which meeting I unfortunately wasn't at, but I did watch the video. And, you know, it was spurred from, there seemed to be some confusion about how to analyze this potential multi-use development. And we want, frankly, we just wanted to make the proposal as simple and straightforward as possible. And, you know, warehouse is also where the applicant believes that the market is and will continue to stay. So that's, that's what drove the change from a more flexible industrial to strictly warehouse. There are some differences in, in traffic. There's some differences in parking calcul, actually pretty significant differences in parking calculations just by the code. For example, the warehouse under your code would require 388 spaces versus 970 for an industrial use. So very significant. So that would mean a difference in the waiver that we're requesting. So we really were just looking to try to make the proposal as straightforward as possible while also be consistent with what we, where we believe the market is.
That makes sense to me.
That answers that. Anyway, a lot of the questions from pages nine through 11 are specific site plan questions to try to get a better sense. So, and I noticed that you dealt with the Quonset hut, so I gave some specific comments about that, that that would be removed. Signs are going to come later. I had some comments about how to label yard setbacks, just to get some clarity on that. And the Clove Creek setback. I didn't dive into design guidelines because I think things are a little bit conceptual right now, but I could do that in the next round. And on the off-street parking, I had a comment on page 10 having to do with 388 spaces would be required, which, I mean, off the top of my head, that seemed to be excessive for what would be warehouse use. So one suggestion I had, if that, and then I believe you're proposing 260 parking spaces.
260, that's right, yes.
So one suggestion is if there's a concern that more spaces are needed, to consider doing, I don't know, like a parking reserve area with.
Yeah, the land banking thing.
Yep, yep, land banking some parking area.
Duchess Planning Board always tells us to reduce it anyway.
Yeah, I think sometimes, I mean, that's something I could ask the traffic engineer about to see if there's something more accurate, because I don't know how. I suppose, because you know, you know your client better that.
Right, the 260 is based on the number of employees. So that's, so that's why we changed it from the 217 to the 260 for this middle as we've been, you know, further refining the plans.
Right.
So 260, as I mentioned before, the industry standard is one employee for every 1,500 square feet of warehouse. So that brings us to the 260 with the 388,000 square foot warehouse.
Is that noted on the plan anywhere?
It is, is it noted on the plan? I'm not sure, I know it's in.
One employee per how many?
EAR and the response letter.
I'm sorry, one parking space for?
Per 1,500 square feet.
Fifteen.
There should be a parking table somewhere in the plan.
There is a parking table, yes.
Well, I'll check and see if that's on there, because that would be helpful to have on there.
Actually, so is that 260 employees who would be there all at the same time? Or would it, could it possibly be in shifts of some sort?
It's possible that it'll be in shifts. Again, we don't have tenants right now, so we're not sure, which is why we're open to land banking some of those 260 spaces.
Land banking and shared park, well, shared parking, if there are three different users on the same building, might be the way to go.
Because chances are they would have at least three shifts.
It's possible, if it's a 24-hour-a-day operation.
I mean, that's something we can fine tune as we go further into the process.
Yes.
All right. And then I'll just skip over to traffic. And so this is page 13. I'm just going to paraphrase a little bit. The traffic study dated December 23, 2024, this is going back to the prior study, analyzed the two different light, two different land uses on the high end of traffic generating from light industrial and the low end from warehouse. And, you know, because I just wanted to have this discussion with Dave once we were looking at, okay, this is warehouse and this is it. And so.
We did include in our, I was just double checking, we did include an updated traffic impact study with our February.
You did, but this one, it was just warehouse.
Yes, this one was, yeah, the February one was just warehouse.
Yeah. It sounds like your client is pretty solid on really just sticking to warehouse and that's it. Like there's no. I don't know, I guess looking down the road, if, if this moves forward with warehouse, and this is kind of a dominant question kind of for the board, if this moves down the road and it's warehouse and then at a later point. the road and it's warehouse and then at a later point, the applicant feels that they might want to change the use, I'm assuming that would be a site plan amendment.
Absolutely.
And I guess what I was thinking is if the seeker review now doesn't cover that potentiality, that then it would have, seeker would have to be redone. And I guess that was the reason that I was really trying to figure out the solid answer on that because I'm certain there is a way to take a look, you know, at either a spectrum of uses or looking at warehouse as being the sort of lowest traffic, lowest impact possibly, depends on the area of impact, and light industrial being the highest, and then there are iterations in between.
Well, one of the things that we've been doing is including in our resolutions of approval, a limitation on use. So that only what's being approved by the board is the only use that's allowed on a particular site. And any changes in those uses would require an amendment for the board to consider. Sorry, I know you're probably talking too far away from me.
It's okay.
It got louder all of a sudden. That was pretty good. And then I know, like, the seeker process is still, still to be determined, but there are other ways of, within the seeker process, of looking at ranges of things such as traffic. So I mean, it's the question of whether the TIS
Traffic and water.
could have or should have included both, you know, both the lower end and a higher range as simply theoretical parts of a study. That is something to think about. I mean, it might be, it might make things easier in the future, but it also, it also will have to do with how we end up looking at the seeker process. And that's where we have to get back to the EAF part two at some point, but we're not, we're not ready to do that.
Yeah, I guess that's, yeah, and it's not just traffic. Traffic just happens to be the indicator right now that we can, you know, talk about. There will be other issues, you know, where a change in intensity would, you know, change the design, change the impacts, et cetera.
And I think that's something, that is, you know, part of the reason why we wanted to make it as simple and straightforward as possible is we wouldn't want, because the client believes that warehouse is the market right now, so we wouldn't want to add additional complications and potential, I'll call them hiccups, for lack of a better term, to the process if that's not where the applicant thinks the market is going and what the end user is going to be. We understand that in the event there is an end user that wants to be a light industrial end user, and that's a tenant that the client wants to go forward with, we understand we'd have to come back and we'd have to go through a seeker process to figure out if that is possible and what mitigation measures might be necessary at that time. So we fully understand that.
And this was a hefty submittal, as most of them are. So I know that I didn't, I didn't make any comments on, on the wildlife study, so.
Do you want to go back to the traffic section and just highlight on page 14, under 54C, what your traffic expert was recommending?
Oh, okay, so number 54, mitigation recommendations depend on the type of land use that gets constructed.
And then C is the part I'm hoping to highlight.
C says, under either, first of all, A and B are warehousing, the proposed development wouldn't require traffic signal. B, light industrial, which is not the proposed use, would benefit from a traffic signal. And then C, under either land use, it would be recommended to extend the second southbound lane of US Route 9 to the driveway and turn it into a dedicated right turn lane. So I think that's, but, and that's under either one.
Yes.
So that's kind of important. And then, you know, going along with that, number 56, approval of the proposed southbound lane improvement on US Route 9 and installation of a traffic signal would rest with the New York State Department of Transportation.
Yep.
And, you know, I guess Dave is saying from experience that DOT might be supportive of a traffic signal on one hand, based on the analysis, but they also might be cautious of approving a traffic signal if it isn't completely warranted. So that's kind of an iffy topic.
But the reason I wanted to highlight that southbound turning lane was because I reviewed the traffic impact study and found that there did not appear to be any reference any longer to a proposed southbound right turn lane on Route 9 leading to the proposed site entrance. So the turning lane had been referenced in previous versions of the proposed Commerce Center impact, traffic impact. And, but I, I also want to just point out that the proposed turning lane is also part of the approved adjacent warehouse project at 415 to 453 US Route 9, the former Dutchess Mall site. And New York State DOT has already basically given conceptual approval to that southbound right turn lane. So it's, it is an important safety improvement, and I believe that the TIS should make reference to that. I don't know why it was taken out. And it also should be shown in some form on the site plan set because it's there and it is most likely going to happen, subject to final approvals by state DOT. But it is something that I think will have to be there to make that site entrance work properly on Route 9. So that's why I'm bringing it up now.
Sure, that's not an issue. I just want to clarify, the original traffic study did include, as we talked about months ago, the light industrial use, which triggered that extension of that right turn lane. We have updated the traffic study for just a warehouse use. We have no problem extending that lane if this board deemed so, and then, as you mentioned, subsequently getting DOT approval to do that. So we have no problem with that.
So my recommendation would be to include that in the, in a further revised TIS because it, it's an operational thing and it's, and it should be shown in a conceptual form on the site plan set. So I feel strongly that that should be something that has to happen.
Okay, that's fine. We can do that.
Dennis, would you like to pick up where Liz last booked, so go through the MJ memo?
I'll try to be as brief as possible. Going through, again, we just note the wetlands and aquifer to make sure those are addressed. Bigger things, the water, is that going to be privately owned or is that going to be dedicated to the?
So the water service will connect to a dedicated main, the ten-inch main, which part of the project adjacent to us is converting that ten-inch main into a village main with an easement. We're tying into that, the connection from that public main to the warehouse will be a private. Is that your question?
Yeah, I just want to know, you might need to have a hot box or a connection or whatever that's going to be. So I just made note of that, and if it's going to be privately owned, that's, that's fine. If it's going to be publicly owned, then it's, you need to have all the easements and everything, but if it's going to be, that's, that's fine. I would just make a note on the plans.
Okay.
I also noted real quick that it looks like you have the location of the, or where the location should be for the fire department connection in relation to the hydrant, just to double check. I think these would be 100 feet. I think it might be a little bit more than that, just to bring that flag, kind of flag There were some minor comments on the profiles of separation between water and sewer, but that's not a big deal. In your sediment and erosion control plan, you show that phase three is going to be 8.94 acres. If that, if that is going to be the area of disturbance, you would require a five-acre waiver. So you just have to submit that to the town.
If I could just clarify in that particular comment, so while that phase shows over five acres, it's clear in our plans, at least our intent, we can clarify if needed, that there won't be five acres of disturbance because that eight acres is within the building footprint. And as the building footprint gets developed, it will be stabilized. They'll bring stone in, moving from one end of the building to the other, and as the stone gets placed, that's considered stabilized. So at no point during the construction of the project will be more than five acres disturbance.
All right, that's, that's fine. I think we just need to note that and then develop that plan a little bit more.
Okay.
That's totally acceptable. We just had to note it on the plans. Stormwater, we have some comments on the stormwater, just again, to make sure that you're up to date with the new regulations, the soil investigations that you got to do with that. And then just to make note that you are in an aquifer, so you have to, there's a little bit more regulations that have to meet on that. We did note that in the infiltration basin during wintertime, you may need to have a series of dry wells, just if there's a layer of frost that it actually can get into it. Again, that's getting into that kind of the details. I think that's all we have at this point. Everything else is technical in nature.
Yeah, we have no issues addressing your comments.
I think we had already authorized offline communication between consultants. Okay, good. All right, so any, any questions from board members, questions or comments?
Yeah, a few. So there was the, I see the masonry garbage area in the southwest corner. Is that going to be sufficient for the entire warehouse? Because that's the only one I saw.
We believe so, but we'll, we'll double check that for the next submission.
And then the, the other item, I saw the landscaping plan. So there's, there's trees around the parking area, there's lights, and there's also hydrants. I guess the question is, you have a lot of impervious area if there's a snow event or multiple snow events, is there a designated area for snow storage? Obviously, you don't want to damage any trees that you're putting in, you don't want to block any hydrants, anything like that. So it would be, you know, good to make sure that we're not, you know, blocking anything important.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, if there's no snow storage area marked on the plans, we'll, we'll take care of that for the next submission.
There might have been.
Yeah.
It's in the sheets. I might have missed it, so I'm asking.
There's a lot on there.
I had a question that relates to the proposed entrance road. So the site plan sheets, examples would be SP 00 and SP 03, indicate that the westernmost portion of the proposed entrance road is to be constructed by Fischel Commerce Center. While the eastern portion is to be constructed by others, in quotes, so presumably meaning the developer of the proposed adjacent warehouse facility. But, so my questions have to do with how, how is that construction of the proposed entrance road going to be coordinated between the different entities? And timing-wise, I mean, I'd say, we still don't know. We had the applicant for the adjacent warehouse and requesting an extension. How that's all going to come together, I guess, is the question.
Yeah, I think that obviously they are much farther along in their process than we are, having received final approvals, and they're, they're really at the, the end of the road, just, you know, getting signatures on their plans. So I think the assumption is that they will go first. They will, you know, that will be constructed before we are ready to have shovels in the ground. So I think that's, that's what the assumption is. If it doesn't work out that way, we're going to have to revisit our assumptions.
Exactly. That's, that was sort of more broadly my question.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's hard to predict the future, but, and it's especially difficult with that, that particular driveway, because it's, it's basically for you, an easement-only situation. So it makes it a little bit more difficult.
Right, we do have the right to improve it for our access. So I think that's something that, that we'd have to discuss with them.
You would end up
Doing it ourselves, most likely, yes.
Jonathan, I guess, I feel like what I'm missing here is, it seems like there are all these pieces available nearby in terms of getting whatever sewage flow there is from this place to this private force main system that other users are using. And I don't mean to be dense, but I'm just, I'm a little stumped about what the road block is in terms of, you know, if, if the medical park is able to, you know, get a force main down to the road and get into that system. I just, I'm having trouble comprehending what the road block is for this particular project. And I don't want to belabor it if the board doesn't want to hear about it, but I just thought, as long as we're all sitting here, it would be helpful.
I think part, that's, so that, like I said before, that the main difference between the medical park and us, we're, we're landlocked. So we don't have direct access to the road without getting permission from another private property owner to go over their property or to go under their property with, with a sewer line. So we are kind of at their mercy.
You can't, and the easement that goes out to the road, you can't use that?
I don't believe it covers sewer. That's my understanding. So we are, we're in a very different situation than the medical center. Because we do have to rely upon the consent of another private property owner that's not part of the application to give us access. So that's the main difference. And, and, you know, like I said before, I, I cornered Chris Fisher in the hallway before he left.
It just seems like such a tremendous roadblock for
Try to continue this discussion because we understand the benefits to us and also to the town if we are able to connect there.
And if you're going to invest this much money, you know, to build the kind of building that you're discussing and all the improvements.
Part of it is also, it's a private, it's a negotiation between two private property owners. So there's, there are things that
Right.
are part of a private negotiation.
Understood. I, you know.
I know. It's, it's, I understand, I understand your frustration and I understand where you're coming from.
I'm sorry. I grew up in Burlington, Vermont, and they were so bent on protecting the lake that, you know, sewer service was being, you know, provided every place possible.
As an IFV grad, I understand.
Right, and here we are sitting on top of an aquifer, so it's just, I don't know.
Well, I, I think
It stumps me.
I think it's, it's a positive development if you can list that as a dependency, subject to successful resolution of ongoing negotiations. But as opposed to saying, no, we don't have any way of connecting.
Yeah, I guess our thought was, since we don't have that permission at this moment, we don't want to hold up the review of, of the application while these negotiations are happening. So obviously, the septic is, is the worst-case scenario that we could study, and that's what we're, that's what we're studying. And we submitted the hydrogeologist report a couple months ago, which demonstrates that, you know, the, the proposed septic system and the fill and, you know, everything is going to be designed appropriately to have no impacts to the aquifer, no impacts to the wetlands, et cetera. So obviously, you have your consultant that will review that and give you his opinion based on what our consultant has provided. But that's why we're moving forward with, with the septic system at this time.
Yeah, it's just a tough situation.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, so I'll just acknowledge the applicant's submission of, of the additional memo dated February 24th, 2025, with comments on the preliminary direct EF part two. We appreciate that. And we will keep that tucked away. And we will keep that tucked away for the appropriate time when we, we'll get back to our review of the EAF part two. So that'll be at some point in the near, well, hopefully near future. I don't, can't predict the future, but once we get our hydrogeologist on board, we'll have him take a look at everything. And then we'll get back to the EAF review at some point.
Great.
So it sounds like at this point, we really can't do much more with Seeker. And, you know, I'll, I'll turn to Dominic and just confirm that comment, but, you know, I think we, we need to wait for getting the results of our hydrogeologist's input.
Agreed, and the applicant has the benefit of Liz's memo. So they have information, and based on the board's discussion tonight, I think they can continue to pursue and refine their plans.
Absolutely. I have one other question.
Okay.
And this is kind of for, for Debbie's benefit.
That's never good for me.
So in our, our submissions have been rather voluminous because of, you know, we're reproducing the environmental assessment report every time. My question is, would the board be okay with us producing hard copies of the change sheets, but giving everything, everything else electronically? We've been giving full copies of everything and also providing it electronically, so that in the event we need to refer to something during the meeting, we have it here. But if there's any way to reduce the amount of paper that we are providing.
I'm not going to say, because you know what my answer is.
What is your answer?
We very much appreciate it, I think.
That does like the hard copy, by the way.
Yeah.
That would be our chairman.
Yes, and, and if there's a reduced number of hard copies, yeah.
I'd like to have two hard copies of everything.
If that's okay with everybody.
Although I do find that huge roll of site plan sheets to be fairly.
I would really like to see that.
I actually have a drawing table in my office area, and I'm afraid it's going to collapse under the weight of that thing.
I, I understand.
It's a good workout, carrying those around.
Twenty-nine hundred pages that you downloaded for this meeting.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine hundred pages.
Hello, that's the whole.
An exhibits list.
So I think the answer is, any way you can figure out how to minimize the paperwork is a good thing. But I still am one of those old fashioned people who does like to look at paper, but I don't think I need like that full roll of site plan sheets every time.
I leave that up to you. To me, it's fine either way.
So should we produce the change sheets?
Yeah.
Any sheets that there, there are revisions being made?
Yeah, just maybe a delta analysis.
Yeah.
Between new submission versus previous.
At this point, that probably makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, okay, good. We, we appreciate that. We'll save some trees.
John.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we will be down on one planning board member, so we'll have six voting members remaining for the rest of the meeting. So any, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next application. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks.
I don't get these.
All right.
But that's most of the words I look at. They like to do.
All right. So the next and final site review is 300 Westage Hotel Site Development Plan, forward to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on February 26, 2025, and to consider declaring lead agency for the project's environmental review. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Kyle Ahern with Lobella Associates. Also here tonight are Bobby Patel with Riverlink Hotels, the applicant, and Neil Alexander with Cuddy Fetter. Let's see. There haven't been a, that many planned changes. A lot of what we've been up to since last time we were here is coordination with other agencies, so just wanted to give a quick summary of those. Okay.
Thank you for your help tonight, Liz.
What?
Thank you for your help tonight.
Thanks. Everybody have a good night, don't stay up too late.
Oh, but if we're, I was going to mention this, but the crowd has gone now, but there is a lunar eclipse somewhere around 2:00 AM, if you want to stay up for that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Should we talk about the hotel until then?
Yes. Yeah.
Meter is running.
Somebody's still awake. Good night.
Good night.
Hey, Liz. So based on the discussion we had at the last meeting, we had received at that point the county planning letter. So based on that letter and discussions with the town planning board, we added a sidewalk connection to the Westage Business Center Drive, the sidewalk network for the rest of the site. So right from the, the main entrance of the hotel, there's a new connection there with the crosswalk. We also added a, four EV chargers on the east side of the hotel. We added a bike rack, which was also at the county planning's suggestion, which we thought was a good idea. We revised lighting, which I want to talk about a little bit more later when we get to MJ's letter, which kind of piggybacks on some of the discussions we had at the last planning board meeting as well. We coordinated with the fire department. They were, they had no comments on the layout or really anything except for, they did request that we add a second hydrant, so we added that at their request at the southeast corner of the building. And that just gave us better coverage in addition to the existing hydrant at the northeast corner. So, you know, all, all corners of the building are better covered from that. We reduced the room count from 107 down to 103, the footprint, and the square footage remains the same, but those, where those four rooms were located on the first floor are now meeting rooms. I believe that is about it. So in addition to the fire department coordination, we did receive the SHIP-O letter of no impact that was submitted with the, as an appendix to the, the EAF. The Village and the DOH, we coordinated with both of them for the water and sewer. I have spoke to both of them since we made that request. Neither of them has provided a, a review letter or any comments, but they both acknowledged they've received it, and they'll be looking at it and providing comments soon. And as far as the plan revisions go, that is about it. So here to answer any questions, we are hoping the, the planning board will be open to declaring lead agency and scheduling the public hearing for the April 10th meeting. And we do also plan to submit to ZBA between now and to that meeting.
All right, before we go around for comments or questions, why don't we have Dennis do the MJ memo?
Going through Seeker, this is a unlisted action. We do note that it's, Gmail is required. Going through the site plan, we know the variances that are requested. You're asking for a waiver for the minimum amount of parking, so we just asked for a written request of justification for that waiver for the planning board. Going through the demo plan, just want to make sure that there's, as you go through the demo plan, make sure there's no interruption to any of the neighboring property or any of structures within the site, since you're not the only individual on the site. On the plans, it's a little difficult to tell the difference between what's proposed and what's the existing, you know, particularly where you're tying in the curbs and, and roadways. So just recommended possibly graying out some of the existing and making the, the proposed bold, just so we can see exactly where.
Did you have a hard copy by any chance?
I did not, I was a.
The PDFs are a little more difficult, especially with them being in and out, but we can try and improve that.
On the, you know, obviously where you can see the roadway, the pavement is fine, it's just where you get into the sidewalks and the, the curbs and stuff like that, it's a little difficult to see what's, what's going to remain.
Sure.
And what's existing. We made some comments on the sediment erosion control. There's, on there, you have a note that says the contractor is to maintain a minimum of 122 parkings, the 23 parking spots for the, the office building. I think there just needs to be a little bit more refinement on the phasing of the sediment erosion control plan, of how that works, when, you know, the transition between the two and making sure they maintain parking for that, that building.
I think our plan for that is to take that plan and basically turn it into a phase one and a phase two, so we.
Okay, yeah, we're just looking for a little bit more detail on that.
Yep.
The grease trap, we're just making sure they verify that this was sized in accordance to the DEC standards for intermediate size wastewater treatment systems. With that, there's a sampling vault that needs to be installed as part of that, but that's all part of the sediment, or I'm sorry, the grease trap sizing. Landscaping, there was a couple of spots that looked like there was some conflict just with some of the sidewalks and, and some hardscapes that looked like they were revised, that just need to do some shifting.
Yeah.
Also, there was a hydrant and some cleanouts that I think you need to move around, and just make sure there's enough clear space around those, those particular items, just to be. The photometric plan, there's a couple of spots, particularly around the perimeter of the, the site, that are, foot candles are, are a little high. I don't know, I know some of it's existing, some of it is proposed, I don't know if there's anything you could do to kind of lower those levels. Any of the water and sanitary improvements are going to need to be approved by the Board of Health and the Water and Sewer Departments. We provided an engineer's report for the, the sanitary sewer pump station, we had no exceptions with that, and that is all that we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I add some more to that?
Yes, please.
So the, the parking waiver, well, I guess to back up a little bit, so when we first submitted the full application after the board accepted it for review, CPL hadn't actually reviewed the traffic study. They, they essentially said they did a broad brush review, it contains everything that it should have, a traffic study should have, but they didn't actually provide technical comments, so. And within that report is the parking reduction justification. So I think, logistically, I just, I guess we just need to figure out, should we submit new hard copies with this next submission for MJ's review?
No, I hadn't come in with all the backup paperwork I do here?
I think it was, but is MJ authorized to do the?
That's, John and I talked, we didn't turn that over to MJ, so I'll let John comment on that.
Yeah, I, I think that's one that slipped through the cracks in the transition between CPL and MJ engineers, so.
It looked like, like you mentioned, they, they had started the review, but I don't know if there, if there's no technical comments that were issued.
Yeah, the comment made was essentially, it is a full report, but it hasn't been reviewed yet.
I mean, obviously.
So is that something that you could get your traffic people to take a look at?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah. So let's make.
We talked about that today, Dennis.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've looked through the report, and it, it all seems to make sense to me, but it would probably not hurt to have your traffic engineer take a look at it.
Yep, we'll take it, not, not a problem.
Okay.
And while we're on that theme, the same would apply to the SWIP as well. So the SWIP report was submitted with that, an original submission, and the same comment came back from CPL that, you know, it's a full SWIP, it contains everything SWIP should have, but it was not, you know, comments were not provided at that time.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll review, any SWIP that comes up.
Okay.
So then, just back quickly to the parking waiver, do you want a separate letter that asks, asks specifically for the waiver, or between the traffic study and the application?
I think between the traffic study, if it's, if it's in the traffic study, that, that should be fine.
Okay.
And it would just be a justification of, I, I think that what you're proposing is fine, but it's, it does need a waiver.
Yeah.
I think it's somewhat of a substantial waiver, I think it's right there, but it's just a backup of, of how that works out.
Okay. Then, yeah.
But I remember in that study, there was that justification for, you know, the shared parking arrangement between the two uses, and should be something fairly, fairly easy to get through. And then, so, yeah, then your traffic, and what is the name of your traffic engineer that usually does this for our, for our local reviews?
For our, it's Mark Placente, I think, Sente? And there's some other people underneath that.
Okay. Good.
Okay, and something we talked about at the last meeting, but obviously Dennis, Dennis was not here, so just bringing you up to speed and get the board back on, you know, back in on the discussion, given the changes that were made. So the original submission, we had gotten from the owner, the spec sheets for the lighting, the existing lighting that's out there, that, that went into the photometric plan to get the existing lighting levels, since all of our proposed poles are actually just relocated existing poles, plus there are existing light poles not being relocated on the perimeter of the site, that will obviously impact the lighting on 300 and 400 for that matter. Those levels were unrealistically high based on the specs, so we went out, after the last submission, we went out and we took light meter re-readings. We revised down the existing lighting based on that, but it is still pretty high, so there is essentially two, two sides to this. The existing lighting is, is quite bright, so we're going to look at ways to reduce it further. But even still, no matter what we do, we're going to have a situation specifically on the west and the north, well, actually, the property line is not there, so. On the west side specifically, we're going to have areas that are above the point one, but those are, you know, you can see that the property line goes through a parking area here, so.
Yeah, which at that, that property line and, and the one that's on the, the eastern side, I don't think that, they were high. We're not too concerned about that, because it does, although it is a property line, it does, but against a roadway and other parking. I think there was a little bit more on the, on the western side, again, that, that goes up against 84, which, again, it's not that big of a deal, but we can bring those down a little bit more.
So these, I believe it's right in this general corner, because the property line is over here, and then it shuts back into the site here. So that's an existing light that we're not proposing to do anything, we're not relocating it, we're not adjusting it. We can look at ways to reduce it from its current level, but it is, it's literally on the property line. So no matter what we do, it's, you know, even with a back, a back shield, it's, you know, the property line's not going to be point one or below. So, you know, we can, for all the, all the existing lights, we're going to look at ways to reduce those a bit, this one included, but I, I, you know, I don't think we're going to get below point one.
And that's understandable, and I know that you're working with an existing condition there, so.
Right. So we will, we'll work on that. And I think that was kind of it. The rest of the comments were pretty straightforward.
Excuse me, because I don't know being dense, but the shaded area is, is part of the 300 property, and the non-shaded area is part of the medical?
No, so the shaded is the proposed new pavement as a result of the hotel. The property line is here, so there is one row of parking right in here that is on the property of 300, we're just not touching it.
Okay, I, my, I went to the property, and I always have to cease whatever, and of course, I'm, I'm looking at things like five pounds of aluminum in a four pound bag, but the, the building, the 300, and I know John's kind of told me they did do something, but I'm just wondering, the occupancy at 300 right now, is it full?
No, our offices are in that building, and Progressive just moved out, and they have like, I think almost a full floor, and they just moved out, so it's not full as it is, and it's getting less.
At the time of the parking study, it was 70%. At the time of the parking study, it was 70%.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, it's like, you know, you have the different, somebody takes over 300, a different property owner, and then gets a lot of people to fill up that building. I'm just concerned about whether the property will have.
Parking study, well, you can go to that.
Right, so the, like I said, it was done at a time when the building was 70% occupied, but the parking study assumes that at some point in time it could be 100% occupied, so it does project out that extra 30%.
And actually, one other postscript on that. The parking study was done at, for 107 rooms, and we've now dropped to 103 rooms. So that would be at least four extra spaces that would have been needed.
Correct.
By my, like, rough estimation. But yes, so when you go back to that study, it's assuming 100%, not 100%.
Oh, I'm just saying, is that, you got?
No, it's a great question, it's a great question.
No, 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 I'm just saying, because you got, you're going to have the hotel and you're going to have 300, and you also got the medical office over there, which seems, you know, these days, there's a lot of people going into the medical office, they start to like intertwine with each other and then, and the other extraneous things, and, you know, you've got people that just come in and park. So I'm just, just trying to see.
No, and I think, I think as an operating institution, you know, West Edge has been able to be more lax in a post-COVID era, right, about what you're talking about, which is people pardon there who aren't necessarily using what's there.
Yeah.
And my guess is if, if, there'll be an enforcement issue.
Quick question. Poughkeepsie, is that something you with, like, I think it's the same project?
Own two, in Poughkeepsie?
Huh? Poughkeepsie Route 9?
No, no, they're other ones.
Okay, because they almost look similar.
It's, that's the brand, it's the brand, own two, that's their building.
Okay.
That's what they do.
Yeah, same, same hotel, different operator.
Yeah, no, no, it's a company out of Norman, the one that gets.
Could I just ask with the change in the floor plan, adding the boardroom and meeting room, is that intended for the occupants, the people staying at the hotel as opposed to like leasing, renting it out to people from outside coming in to use it?
That stay at the hotel.
Okay, so it might, it might be helpful to put that, you know, in some kind of a document.
It's only because we own the Hampton across the street, we don't have any meeting space there, and we lose rooms because of that.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, I just, it would be good to have like either a note on the site plan or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a separate use with a separate leasing history.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Okay.
It's not big enough for that. If you, conceptually, I mean, not only with Bob, he said about his Hampton's experience, it's an extended product, so people are staying there over the long, so you could expect them to work there too.
I'm going to tell you, you guys are not going on here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll, yeah. Question, where are you putting the snow? Right now, you're putting the snow on all the vacant spaces that are there.
Essentially along the south side of the property here. Little bit.
84?
Yes. Yeah, so this is still 300 property here. There's also some space along on the north side. It's a little harder to get to with the plow though, so we're assuming mostly on the south side here. Which is essentially, I mean, it's essentially where they're currently plowing. There's a little bit more space in the landscaped areas, but those are also quite burned up currently, so it's kind of hard to get snow up there as well. So, kind of limited options, both existing and in the future. Although we will have a lot more snow not getting plowed because it'll be sitting on the hotel roof, so there's that.
True.
I mean, this year was it so much snow, it just never went away.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have more winters like the previous two coming forward.
Any more questions or comments from planning board members? I was just going to mention that at some point, we will need a material sample board for the colors, materials of the building. Actually, I was taking another look at the elevation drawings and the colors, I mean, they look a little bit odd to me. I'm just wondering if the colors could be sort of toned down a little bit, and there's especially this bright green vertical element in the building, which I thought was a little bit strange.
I'll talk to the architect and the brand, we'll try to figure something out, that green is like their.
Yeah.
It's franchise architecture, that's what we're kind of.
Yeah, well, tell them to modify their franchise architecture for us.
I'll give you some. We will see what we can do, it's, we will make the ask and we'll keep leaning on it, but candidly, it's sort of like asking Duncan not to use his colors, right?
Is it a franchise color?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's their branding.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it has to be exactly like that. I'm sure they've got some other things in their back pockets.
Your comment is completely heard, we're just, we'll try, we're just sort of trying to let you know it's their, it's a, you know. Middletown has the same thing too.
Well, we're Fishkill there, Middletown.
Are you putting a walkway to Chick-fil-A?
Yes, so you can take this one right here.
Are you talking about an elevated walkway, Fred?
I'll take you all the way. Not elevated though.
No.
We're trying to do the dance with them on that because we don't really want to hear them tell, give us a lecture on the land mat either, right? Because they've obviously invested a lot of money in their brand, so we're trying to finesse it.
One thing we do need to do is a motion for lead agency. So the planning board classified this as an unlisted action and circulated the notes of intent, and more than 30 days has transpired, so we didn't receive any objections from involved agencies. So is there a motion declaring that the town of Fishkill Planning Board will serve as lead agency to conduct a coordinated environmental review under SEACR for the proposed 300 West Edge Hotel?
Some will.
Second.
Well, that was a tie, Bob, I think, I heard you first. Felix moved it, Bob seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? So that's six voting members now, six in favor. What do we all think about whether we're ready to schedule a public hearing on this or not? Dennis, what do you think in terms of the remaining things?
I think as our plans, they're in pretty good shape. Everything is, is technical in nature and in details. I don't think there's going to be any major changes to the plan, so I think that it would be appropriate this time to have a public hearing.
Okay, Dominic, do you agree?
I agree.
All right, how about board? All right, oh, would somebody like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on the 300 West Edge Hotel proposal at the April 10th, 2025 planning board meeting at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible?
So moved.
Kevin moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions? That carries six to zero. So we need public hearing signs. So this is always strange in the West Edge Business Park. So we certainly should have one out on the site frontage on West Edge Business Center Drive. But I think in the past, we've done, we've put one out.
What, you know, we just did it for the warehouse, for the.
Self-storage.
Storage facility.
Yeah, we had previously done one for the 300 Office Building proposal. So I think we've put one in that grass area near the lake at the intersection of West Edge Business Center Drive and West Edge Drive. So it's confusing because all these names, yeah, right at the T intersection. So one there would probably be good. And then in the past, we've put one out at the Route 9 West Edge Drive intersection, just so people coming in, you know, to that main entrance can see it.
So a total of three?
That's what I thought of, anyone else have any thoughts? Okay, so three signs, sounds good. And then Debbie, you've got information on what they need to know for the public hearing?
That happens after the meeting, but yes, absolutely.
All right, well, I think we're set then. Do you have any other questions for us?
I'm good. We are good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, stay up for that lunar eclipse. So just to mention, the ZBA met on February 18th and did discuss the planning board's application on our appeal. And they're going to continue their discussion at their next meeting, next Tuesday, March 18th, so I hope to attend. So we'll see what happens there.
I believe they have to reach a decision because of the 62 game.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Anything else board members or staff would like to bring up? All right.
I think we should do a whole study on that whole class of, whole West Edge study.
Okay, Fred, are you volunteering to do that?
No, I'm leaving it to you, Chair.
No, I will decline that, I will decline that request.
The traffic is going to be horrendous going through that.
Well, it would make it easier if powers that be would actually refer things to the planning board so that we could put it all together in a planning fashion. That's all I have to say about that.
That's all I would say.
I said it.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, I guess, motion to adjourn? Quick, quick. Yes, yes, all right.
Second.
We're adjourned, okay. Thank you, everybody.
I better call Michelle and tell her to let that guy go.